Welcome to a May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call of the City Council?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. At the beginning of this meeting, I would like to hold a thirty-second moment of silence for the victims of today's mass shooting in San Jose. Thank you very much. The topic of our special meeting tonight is the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two city work program. Our fiscal year begins on July first, two thousand twenty-two, and it will end on June thirtieth, two thousand oh, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one, and it will end on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And so, uh, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to engage in an ongoing discussion with regard to what the council's priorities are for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, I will like to say briefly that I'm very appreciative of all the efforts that have gone in by our city staff, our city council, the public, um, in trying to formulate what is a good cohesive work plan, work plan going forward. And, um, I did add a few things, uh, due to some, uh, experiences and observations of what might be, um, good allocations, but I think everyone is in good faith working here for trying to create a community work plan. So, um, I just wanted to make that statement at the outset of this, and so with regard to being able to, uh, you know, have certain priorities or allocations, uh, I think we've set a good tone for trying to go forward in the next year coming off of a rather unusual year here. So without further ado, um, Madam City Clerk, would you like to introduce the, um, staff presentation on the side? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam City Manager, would you like to, uh, I apologize?
That's okay. I'm gonna ask, uh, so Katie is sharing her screen, and I'm gonna just run through a very uh, short deck of slides in order to, uh, provide most discussion time for the city council. As a reminder, this is our, I wonder if you could make your, the screen a little bit bigger, Katie? So, this is where we are in the process, um, city council meeting in May, um, for consideration of the work program, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two work program. Next. Um, I'm not gonna read the slides, of course, but, um, you understand what process we've been through. Uh, the departments have considered items in priority order and proposed items for twenty twenty-two city work program based upon priority. On May fifth, the council provided additional direction to revise the proposed twenty twenty-one, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two city work program. Um, this is a, um, kind of summary of what we're gonna go through, is kind of the revisions from the last time you saw this. We heard you, we, we organized the commission and committee items more in an omnibus package. Uh, we added language revamping the block leader program and neighborhood watch items, uh, along with, um, neighborhood councils, consideration of neighborhood councils and term limits for block leaders. We added language encouraging dark sky compliance by school sites and removed the traffic garden item. We, um, took a look at the revision put forth by the mayor, um, back on that date, um, and find that we have for the drone show, we can do some more research should the council, um, decide on this item, uh, for July fourth, two thousand twenty-two, due to some of the items that, uh, the mayor mentioned last time, including a competition for this, um, drone show, um, and other research we would have to do regarding FAA certification. Um, our current, as, just some data, our current estimated firework show cost roughly, uh, eighty thousand dollars total, eighty-two thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars total, including, um, planning the logistics for approximately a twenty-five minute show. Uh, the estimated drone show is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar show for an appro- plus fifty thousand for logistics. So two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars for approximately eleven-minute show, and there are multiple, um, multiple, uh, entities now providing the, these kinds of drone shows. Um, again, I mentioned the FAA permitting and some more research to figure out where these drone shows could be held or located. To accommodate this particular piece of the new proposal, um, we would have to hold off the, uh, dogs-off-leash till FY twenty-three, um, as a reminder. Uh, we have started a DOLA pilot, but we haven't, um, completed the pilot along with some of the other sports that are at, uh, Jollyman, nor have we expanded that DOLA to other parks. And DOLA was rated as one of the lower, of, one of the low-rated items by council. Next. Uh, for the council commission engagement, um, there was a proposed three-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, fifty thousand dollars for council, twenty-five thousand dollar per commission. Um, there has been a recommendation, actually, as I've heard at the mayors and commissions meeting, to have commissions submit ideas to the council for evaluation to allow for an estimation of staff time required. Um, approval by council and a disclosure about how the funds will be spent on a, in kind of a proposal process. Um, this can easily, this can be accommodated, but not knowing what the, uh, process will actually be at this point. Um, as restrictions lift, however, many of the commissions in that meeting, commission leads, um, talked about relaunching normal activities such as our festivals and sports and programming at some of our, um, city, city facilities as we reopen, which will also help us, um, reactivate and get back to normalcy, which I think is the intent of this proposal. Um, additional, um, for these items, because we are staffed for that, those items will not take additional staffing or, uh, our, as normal, part of normal operations. Uh, Cupertino store added to the Chamber of Commerce, there was a hundred thousand dollars proposed to renovate the Chamber of Commerce building to provide a space for the Cupertino store. Um, normally, uh, I wouldn't recommend that we take dollars and invest in somebody else's property. Um, perhaps there's a lease agreement or something that can be had in reverse with the chamber in order to support the idea of the Cupertino store. Um, the chamber, this assumes the chamber would also manage the renovation and store operations, including staffing. If city staff are needed to manage the renovation of the store, additional staff would have to be required. There are shifts that need to be considered, um, as part of the store, depending on how, um, busy it might be. Uh, and if the city is expected to provide merchandise, it is estimated to start up that merchandise at about twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. Ten-four-five-five Tory, uh, as a, I don't think I have to remind anybody that we recently acquired that for the city. There's about a three-million-dollar, um, propos-, um, budget, sorry, to renovate it and make it ADA compliant as and is also part, um, of the CIP proposal. Uh, since this item has already been planned for as part of the CIP, uh, much of the staff time has already been accounted for in that item. Uh, the recommended action, of course, after discussion is to provide in, a little more input and, um, adopt the twenty-twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two city work program. And that is it.
Okay, great, thank you, City Manager Feng. We are now at, um, oh, and, and could you pull the, um, last slide up just so we can uh, reiterate where we are in the process and what to expect in the upcoming two steps? Because, of course, the work plan synergizes with our budget, and the budget needs to be defined very, uh, briefly.
Absolutely.
In time, so, um, so we're looking at our city council.
Blow it up, yeah, blow it up a little bit, sorry about that, it's a little small for the ones there.
And we have an upcoming, uh, budget session, uh, and that's a continued session from our last, uh, session. And I believe that, um, irrespective of when it occurs next week, it will probably happen in early June. Um, so, um, that next box is, uh, going to be modified, because, of course, you know, uh, we, we don't have on our calendar teed up for it to happen within the next, uh, five days. And then, in the city council meeting in June, we have to adopt the proposed, uh, budget for the next fiscal year. Um, and so, uh, this is really well timed, again, congratulations on getting us into this synergized, uh, moment where we're, um, taking all of our commissions, uh, and the audit committee, and, uh, considering the feedback and input. And, and here we are, there's a cohesive document, and we're in a position to combine it with our, our budgetary efforts that are timely and for the next time, uh, fiscal year. So, thanks very much. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for any, uh, questions from our city council with respect to the staff presentation. Councilmember Moore?
Uh, so I have a question, kind of on the, on the budget, uh, and just, it's a real basic one. So if, if we had appropriated funds to, say, cultural events, um, in the previous budget, and those monies weren't spent, uh, could you remind me what happens to, uh, that? So say you appropriated maybe four-hundred thousand for cultural events, maybe spent a hundred thousand, what happens to the other three-hundred?
Um, Councilmember Moore, I can answer that question. Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, I'm gonna apologize for the background noise, um, but hopefully you can hear me okay. Um, what happens with those dollars is that department will evaluate if they need to carry over any of those dollars into the next fiscal year for the same purposes for which it was granted. If they do have that request, they'll make that request to budget staff who will review that request and either carry over those funds for the same purpose, or let those funds fall to fund balance.
Okay, now I wish I understood that. So, let's try it again. So there's, there's three-hundred thousand left over, and in this budget, the new one, we have four-hundred-and-two-thousand allocated to cultural events. Is it four-hundred-and-two-thousand plus potentially whatever's left over, or is that like a decision somebody has to make?
It's a potentially, but it's a decision that gets made, uh, so first the department will request those dollars be carried over if they want them to, and they have to tell us what they're gonna use them for, because it has to be for the same purpose for which the council allocated those funds. And then we go ahead and we would approve those, if, if that's the case, then the department can show why they need those dollars, and then we bring all of those carryover appropriations, um, as an attachment to council as part of the first quarter.
Okay, okay, I get that, yes. Um, and then, um, so when I look at the cultural events that are in the budget, um, going forward, uh, they talk about, um, gosh, uh, Fourth of July festivities, um, let's see, Big Bunny five K, uh, let's see, events at Memorial Park, Quinlan Community Center, summer concert series, Cinnamon Sundown, Shakespeare in the Park, and tree lighting. Um, and cultural events at Memorial Park, including the Cherry Blossom Festival, festival, World Journal Festival, um, et cetera. Um, so I would think that a lot of those events are probably not going to take place, or like with Big Bunny, it became kind of, uh, it was more virtual, you didn't have to have the staffing and all that out, um, in the public. So, I, I'm just kind of wondering for some of these requests that have popped in at the end of the last meeting, is there some way that, um, that this, can, can this be, you know, manipulated a little bit to, in order to, to cover other, other, other events? Or can, can the money be used for the, the council objective? Um, the adding money, funds to the commissions or committees, or is it kind of locked in here?
Um, so we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't be able to really answer that till first quarter, when we've closed our books and we know what's, um, kind of fallen into fund balance, and we can bring that number back to council to say we thought we were going to end with, let's say, ten million at year-end in fund balance, but we actually ended with twelve million, so there's an additional two million that we didn't expect to come in that would go to our, our unassigned or unearmarked fund balance. But we don't generally make that calculation till we close our books, or at least, um, which happens generally at the end of September timeframe, and then we bring first quarter or, uh, mid-November back to the council.
Okay, great, thanks very much. I don't see, um, hand raised from Councilmember Moore anymore, we'll go on to Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, is this where I can ask clarific- oh, sorry, clarification questions of the, um, the projects?
Yes, please.
So on number two, um, in addition to the Mary project, we combined the Outback Steak house location. So I wonder, is the scope maybe should not just include ELI housing for developmental disabled, but also include EMR housing? Because it looks like it's a broader two projects together instead of just one.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Yes, please, Director Feng.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Way, uh, yeah, the council can certainly make that clarification, but ELI is, is part of BMR, affordable housing. So I think specifying that, you know, ELI housing doesn't preclude other affordability levels for study or for consideration. So, but again, council can certainly make that clarification, and if you feel like that's makes it more clear, uh, more transparent, um, that, that, that's fine.
Okay, I, I would like to, to add that, so it's more, uh, broader, the scope is broader. Um, so another question, uh, is number six, it says to develop a job program, I guess for the homeless, for two individuals for six months, and that's gonna cost two-hundred-thousand dollars. Are we developing this by ourselves, or we're doing with the county? How does this monetary come about? It seems very, not cost-effective to develop a, two jobs for six months for two-hundred-thousand dollars.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Way, Ben Feng, George and Community Development, uh, yeah, it's, it's a new item for, for us, uh, citywide, so it's, it's sort of our ballpark estimate if we need to, for example, seek a contract assistant, for example, if we need to get in-house, uh, recruitment, whether it's social service type of experience or not, we just, we just don't know, I mean, working with the homeless task force, uh, that's, that's comprised from, from community development, public works, um, departments, we, we just don't know. So it's, it's a, it's a very, very new item, we don't have any experience doing this, so two-hundred thousand is sort of our, I guess ballpark, we'll, we'll have to come back, once, once it gets approved, we initiate the project, we'll have much better idea, um, about how to proceed. But yes, we will, of course, we'll have to explore collaborative opportunities with, with, with the county. I think that's, that's, um, that's a given, um, the county has more of the resources, uh, and the experience in this area, but we also want to, to look at, uh, any potential citywide internal options as well.
Okay, so the scope could be more than two individuals, six months, just an example that you're giving.
I, I think that the, the scope for two individuals is what I, what we heard from, from council. I think, um, Councilmember Willie had proposed that, and so that's what we put down for two, but, um, and that's, that's what's there, what's there right now.
Okay, because it's a new project, so just, I got maybe a scope, and then a budget put in there, you come back to us after first quarter, or ask, um, when it's being implemented, that we can adjust it. Uh, is that a correct description of it?
Madam City Manager.
Now, let me try some of this, um, so it's just been kind of our experience nominally from the homeless encampment, um, addressing the homeless encampment, uh, earlier in the, or late last year, is that, um, a lot of times, if you're working with the homeless, seemingly they, they may not have any issues, but a good majority of them have mental health issues, and they require wraparound services or support during work programs. So we estimated what appears to be high, but our experience now with, um, the wraparound services that are supporting the individuals and housing as we speak are ve- it's very expensive. So, again, it's kind of a combination between my answer for the content of what might need to, might, that, that funding might need to support, um, combined with, um, Director Feng's answer.
Okay, thank you, so number six and seven, kind of a combination of homelessness, um, project. Okay, so I'm gonna add it to, um, Councilmember Moore's question on budget. For example, on eleven, the shuttle bus budget has already been one-point-seven-five, one-million-seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars. I think that's a, um, two-years-ago budget, and so this, we're not asking for new money, right? Because the project is kind of stopped right now because of COVID, but then reinstated, this is still within that, that budget?
Um, I, I can handle that, Mayor, if you'd, if you'd like me to. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, um, Councilmember Way, yes, that, that was, those were funds that were budgeted in nineteen-twenty fiscal year. Um, we did spend some of those dollars as we did ramp up the program, it was, program was suspended, those dollars are still there, and then carried over, and will be applied when the shuttle, uh, gets back into business. We, we do anticipate bringing that back to council for some consideration to that agreement, um, in the next month or so, very soon.
All right, thank you, so that's another new budget, okay. I, I have a question on twenty-nine, the lease with San Jose Water, it ends in November twenty-twenty-two. So this project seems to have a time constraint, that you need to kind of work it out before this ends. So, uh, we seem to prioritize it pretty low, so how would we handle that? Would we put it, you know, start to do it a little bit earlier, even because, even it's rated low? Because, uh, there is a time constraint, we need to do it before the, uh, contract ends, which is November twenty-twenty-two.
Right, um, well, you know, how council wishes to prioritize, or what projects they want to include in the work plan is, is at your discretion, as, as a department, we're, uh, Public Works, we're, we're responsible for that lease agreement, and we're, we're moving forward timely, you know, given that time constraint. And we do have, uh, a discussion scheduled on this topic, um, just, you know, very, very soon.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way, Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to provide a little bit of my thinking, since, you know, I was the one who was, um, wanting to get a, uh, jobs program. And so, to me, it's, it's an open, open, um, item at this point. My thinking was that we have the homeless that conceivably want to get back into the workplace, but with all the hindrances, they find that very difficult. Until you can get that first job, how do you then get a job at another company that's more long-term? So, that being said, I talked to Josh Sello at West Valley Community Services, and ran the idea by, uh, by him, saying, if we could put two people that are conceivably homeless or close to it in our community, part-time work, maybe public works, helping, uh, a work crew or landscaping, maybe it would be, uh, Parks and Rec, and maybe helping out, um, set up chairs or displays, or maybe it would be administrative services. Josh said, yes, he would be very happy to work with the city, and he says that he has, uh, quite a few homeless and near-homeless people that really would like to be employed, but getting started is a challenge for which West Valley Community Services doesn't have the means to do that. So he said by helping channel a couple people to us that would work for part-time for about six months, conceivably getting Cupertino City on their resume, that then would allow them the next step, and providing things work out like that, those two seats would open up for maybe two more. At the end of six months, at the end of the year, we look back, how were we able to help some of the, uh, uh, challenged individuals that are in our community? That's what's behind this. Um, I'm happy that, you know, there's a conceivably not to exceed two-hundred-thousand-dollar amount, but I, I don't see it as being that size at all. If we're hopefully, uh, trying to get individuals that are in that capacity of, of needing a job, and, uh, they're stable, and they're currently, uh, connected with West Valley Community Services, that takes a lot of the unknown out, and, you know, allows us to help in that capacity. So, that's what my thinking is, and I think after we approve the work plan, providing that stays in here, you know, we would have a team meeting with city staff, public work, Parks and Rec, administrative services, and C. And then with whatever we then feel, we would then invite Josh from West Valley Community Services to come over and kind of help us, you know, decide how to implement this with his help. And so, I'm, I'm very positive on it. I really hope, six months, twelve months down the road, we look back and say, wow, we were an active participant in helping the, the, uh, challenged individuals in our community. So, so I'll leave it at that, I hope that gives what I'm thinking, but what really plays out will be, you know, more or less the, uh, the task to define. Thanks.
Okay, great, thanks, Councilmember Willie. Uh, Councilmember Moore, I do see it painted, um, up again, but what I'll do is, I'll go through a round of questions uh, from each of the council members, and then go over to public comment, uh, for members of the public that are here, and then we can have another round of questions, including discussion, uh, following, uh, our public commentary. So, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, did you have any clarified questions of the staff presentation?
Okay. So. So I'm, where did start my question? Okay, number twelve, the Lawrence Mitty project. And I see that, uh, that we don't have any additional budget, and then we are doing the annexation next year, so do we expect that to take, uh, the entire year? And we are not planning to start designing or concept brainstorming the whole year? I'm just wondering.
No, thank you for the question. Uh, we are, um, as we mentioned in our, in one of our prior meetings, um, annexation will occur, uh, and we have the budget to, uh, proceed with, uh, planning, uh, community outreach, programming of, of the, uh, location, and if everything lines up well, and then annexation goes quickly, we, we very easily could be getting into design that next fiscal year.
So you means, so the next fiscal, fiscal year, uh, we will be doing outreach to the community to discuss what, how do we use this site?
Yes, yes, that, that's correct.
That's not very clear from the description or the objective. And then so those activity, the outreach, wouldn't, doesn't need any additional budget, because it's all budgeted staff time, right? Okay?
That's correct.
Um, but then this, this objective doesn't really say we will start the outreach, uh, concept. So likely, you envision we might come to an idea of what to do then in the next fiscal cycle, we would have, uh, design.
Uh, correct, um. Yeah, I think what, um, I think what we've previously stated is that we would, uh, after we had acquired the property, that we would complete the annexation property process, we would, the, the development project for the site would be included in the CIP. So it's, it's part of our CIP, um, description, I think that's where the detail you're looking for is at, is in our CIP.
Okay, so when do we expect the annexation to finish?
Well, there's, there's, you know, we, we've submitted things to LAFCO and to the city of San Jose, so it is going through that process. Um, you know, we're prodding it along, but we don't control the, the length of it, but we're, we've done what we, what we can do, and we're, we are monitoring it frequently.
I'm gonna jump in by way of, um, uh, extension of that answer, Vice Mayor Chow. So there wasn't, uh, a submission, and, um, we needed to have San Jose place it on an agenda sometime in April, uh, they didn't. Um, I, I was actually not aware that the city had made that submission, and so I recently followed up with our city manager, who, uh, notified me that that had happened. Um, and I, I just did make a point without casting aspersions, that it would have been good to have that knowledge back in January, when it was submitted, so that, you know, people in Cupertino do also know our fellow, uh, electeds in, in San Jose, and we could, y- you know, start talking. And, and so right now, we're at a point in the annexation process where the next touch point in San Jose would be in October. And so I think we're advised, uh, at this point, for six months in advance. And so I think we're advised at this point for six months in advance. And so it would be good to be able to, you know, have those communications and be able to encourage that. And, and if not, if not necessarily in a way that, in, in a way that is, is direct, at least be aware of it so that those stated priorities could be made known to. So I, I think it's been clear in the context of our meetings that are kind of in a relative fishbowl, right? Because we have a lot of various jurisdictions around the area that we have this as a priority on council and public. But it's not necessarily even known across Bollinger, right, in San Jose or across Lawrence Expressway for that matter. So, so that's just something to keep in mind. And hopefully we do get a significant touch point in the annexation process moving forward. And, you know, frankly, I agree with you that we can be working in parallel on outreach as well. So definitely appreciate the question.
Mr. Mayor, may I add just a little couple of tidbits of information? So right after that October timeframe in the City of San Jose, LAFCO has another thing happening in December. So that tight turn, council and staff will have to pay particular attention to when it comes out of the October process in San Jose to make sure that LAFCO and everybody is aware going into their December process. And then it should be relatively quick coming out the other end by, I think it's that spring or so. The other thing is that we are preparing an RFP for that quote programming and outreach piece for consultants. So it is happening concurrently, but we can't quite do it until the, you know, we've got the budget in line and all that. So it will happen concurrently, it won't happen linear.
Okay, so best case, San Jose approved it in October, LAFCO in December, and the annexation will happen early spring.
That's what I think.
We will start the outreach. Then, but then that cost is not in the budget. So there will be a cost because we are going to retain a consultant to do the outreach. So that's the budget right now.
Right.
And we might need to adjust if everything goes well, I guess. Okay, that's fine. So number fourteen, that's the objective standard. So I see it was allocated a million dollars and now it's five hundred thousand. So we don't have as many, as much to do as we had expected?
No, Vice Mayor Chow, we have just as much as we anticipated. This is merely a sort of budgetary efforts. So we, we estimated a million dollars for the last fiscal year for the item. And obviously the item has rolled over to this fiscal year as well. We've only used five hundred thousand. So therefore we can just roll the five hundred thousand remaining for this year. Does that make sense? I'm not, I don't know if I'm explaining that properly, but it's, it's still the same amount. And what we're estimating the, the cost is related to legal as well, as well as environmental review. And that's what the budget is primarily for.
Oh, so five hundred thousand is used, so that's the remaining five hundred thousand.
That's correct. That's why you have a funky language that talks about defunding, and I think that's a, that's a budget thing.
Yeah. But some of the item, I see the exact amount for allocated budget and then the same amount for estimate. For example, like the shuttle bus, it's the same amount. So we already spent some on that already.
Yeah, so to clarify, it's, the estimated budget is what we had originally estimated. And since this was an existing item, we didn't want to not show that we had originally estimated a million. And so, but now we're saying that we think it, it's only going to be an estimate of five hundred thousand and the actual allocation was a million, but the remaining unused five hundred thousand will return to the general fund.
Okay, so allocated is allocated this fiscal year.
Allocated means that it was funded by council at some point, it could be this fiscal year or prior.
Or prior fiscal year. And estimated is for the new, the new fiscal year, this is how much it will appear on the budget.
Not necessarily. The estimated is just what we estimate the project to cost, given the scope that we have today. So since the estimated budget is less than what we've been allocated, the remaining budget will be returned to the general.
So but then that's still the, the next fiscal year on the book, we would allocate five hundred thousand for this project, right?
Yes, the council will have funded five hundred thousand.
Okay, number nineteen, it's the Climate Action Plan. I think allocated was a hundred thousand and now estimated is one hundred seventy eight thousand. So this was the continued item. So was the hundred thousand already spent? So are we looking at the total cost to two hundred seventy eight thousand? Or is the total cost one hundred seventy eight?
We have Andre DeBord.
How, how do we know how much of the allocated from prior years are expensed? So I know the total cost of the project.
Good question.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, this is Andre DeBord, the Sustainability Manager. I can answer your first question regarding the Climate Action Plan and the total cost for that project. This is an item that was authorized in the work program for our current fiscal year and budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. That the total project cost at that time was known that it would be greater, but we actually held off on requesting the full amount with the uncertainties of COVID. What we have here is a, is a request for the remaining amount to finish that project. So the total price for that will be one hundred seventy eight thousand dollars to complete the Climate Action Plan.
Okay, so total is a hundred seventy eight. The hundred thousand allocated this year is not used yet?
We, we've utilized the hundred thousand dollars that was originally allocated and we are requesting in our next fiscal year, seventy eight thousand dollars to bring that project to completion.
So the, so, so it should appear in the new year budget as seventy eight thousand, right? Not one hundred seventy eight. This is where it gets confusing. So one hundred seventy eight is a hundred thousand from this year already allocated and expensed. And then we are requesting seventy eight thousand for the next fiscal year for additional work to finish this, right?
That's correct.
So then, yeah, these two columns are a little confusing here. And then, so for the mixed-use residential design standard, I also see two hundred thousand for this year, two forty for next year. Is it a similar interpretation? Two hundred thousand is allocated and expensed? And now next year, we are only adding forty thousand to the new budget?
Sorry, yes, we have, yes, correct.
So, so yes. So the, so what we will see for next fiscal year is this two forty minus two hundred thousand. Okay, that's how. So this is almost done then, right?
Okay, thank you, I shall.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I have a limited number of questions before I go to public comment. With regard to the staff presentation of the amount of cost for a fireworks show, it stated thirty four thousand five hundred, if I'm remembering correctly, it was thirty thousand something, in addition to fifty thousand dollars of additional costs. So that's roughly eighty something thousand dollars, correct?
That's correct. I think it was thirty two thousand five hundred plus fifty thousand.
Okay, great, so eighty two thousand five hundred. And did we have a fireworks show last year?
In twenty twenty, we did not.
Okay, and how about in approximately a month and a week or so? Are we anticipating a fireworks show then?
No, we will not.
Okay, and are we expecting that the cost is fairly similar from last year to this year to prospectively next year if we're looking at fireworks shows?
Probably, I would say, that's a safe.
I mean, would I go to experience a significant savings on the order of, you know, a third or more, anything like that? It should be.
I think it's a safe bet, I think it's a safe bet that the estimates will be somewhat similar, yes.
Somewhat similar and possibly even a little bit higher, just depending upon how.
Yep.
You know, the costs go. So eighty two thousand five hundred, I believe is, what, two thousand, two hundred and forty seven thousand five hundred dollars? Is that reasonable? It's approximately two hundred and fifty thousand?
Which, the drone show?
No, if you multiply three times eight thousand five hundred for three years of fireworks shows.
I haven't done the math, but.
Yeah. So, well, you just take eighty, eighty thousand times three is pretty straightforward.
Two hundred, two hundred and forty seven thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. So with respect to identifying a cost, it, it is, would you agree, fairly comparable to what our initially anticipated costs might be? And just to clarify, the estimate I made, I went onto Intel's website. But of course, there are multiple vendors who provide these types of services. But for Intel, their kind of top of the line, if you will, listed price is two hundred thousand. Of course, they'll, they'll do more, but, you know, they'll ask for an inquiry directly. So, but based upon that estimate, the three years that we would not have had any kind of a fireworks show, this year, last year, and next year, you know, assuming that there isn't one there either, is pretty much equivalent, isn't it, to what our projected cost might be for a drone show for next year, for July of twenty twenty two? Is that, is that a fair statement, do you think?
Sure, if all those estimates remain, remain the same, you're right, there's multiple vendors that now provide these kind of things. And of course, there's additional, sorry, additional research to be done that we just didn't have, couldn't get to that we could spend, you know, the fiscal year researching should council decide to, should council vote this, this particular option in. Costs seem comparable. Just the comparative is, and, and they're different, they're completely different shows. So you have one that lasts about twenty five minutes and one that lasts about eleven minutes currently.
Of course, of course.
Technology changes very quickly too, though, right? So next year.
To your point, the budgets can be, can be expanded, they can also be shrunk, right? I mean, we could, in all likelihood, have a, a show for approximately the same budget that we have a fireworks show as well. But of course, it wouldn't be as extensive as, as one with a larger budget. So with regard to trying to figure out the questions on Lawrence Mitty, you know, I, I do appreciate the fact that we're in the middle of an annexation process. But just to clarify, is there anything that prevents us from conducting public outreach to the extent that we're essentially asking the question of what would the public like to see in the utility of this space that we've recently acquired in the last year? So I, I guess that's directed to either the Director of Public Works who's turned his camera on or the Director of Parks and Rec, Recreation and Community Services, or the city manager. Let me go by order of turning the camera on, so Director, Director Lee. Anything precluding us from reaching out to the public at this point?
I'm not aware of anything that would preclude us. As long as council, you know, we're proceeding without having the annexation in place, there is some minor margin of risk there. I don't think it's that great, but as long as that's understood.
Okay. Director Magrini, any, anything to add to that?
No, I concur, with Director Lee.
Okay, great. And Susan, you have your camera, did you want to say anything to that point as well? Oh, no, technical issue, sorry.
Oh, sorry, there we are, put the microphone down. Good evening, Mayor Pardis, Susan Michael, CIP, Director, Manager. And we are moving forward with the project. We are working on the RFP. Our next step is to go out for consultants to hire to keep the process going. We're definitely actively working on it.
Great. What's the timetable for the RFP process look like? At, at around what time could the public expect to see, based upon the RFP you're describing, some kind of outreach to, to them to have those initial questions as to what they'd like to experience and see at that space?
I would expect that the RFP process would take a few months to put it out there, get the right candidates and come back and then get them started on the designs and strategy for the project. So I would guess that it would be somewhat, let's say, realistic at the end of the year. Yeah.
Okay. And is there a budget for the contract that's been set aside at this point?
I, no, I don't think we have a budget at this point.
Okay, and so what is the RFP asking for if we're not sure how much the services will cost?
We're definitely working on that. We have a landscape architect who are trying to get involved as well as consultants who are experienced in public outreach, playground services, all of the above. It's actually, that's the difficulty is that we're trying to get a really good team that can do all the things that need to happen at that property as well as, and planning as well as engineering, all the things. So we're trying to write the RFP appropriately.
Understood. Okay, so that, that helped clarify one aspect of it. The RFP is not actually out at this point.
No.
It is being formulated. And your expectation is that a few months seems a pretty, you know, kind of a broad range of dates. So about how long would it take, do you think, before we could have that step where it's being put out to the public and people could be actually examining the RFP itself?
I think with the internal review, we probably need to have a month to get that ready and then a month of having it out there to get responses. And then another month to evaluate it, just a broad stroke.
Okay. Oh, thank you very much. And then this is a budgetary question with respect to this project. So one of the first allocations that I made, and this is way back when I was elected to council at the end of two thousand fourteen, in that first budgetary cycle, that's when we were able to take these funds and set them aside for the Lawrence Mitty project. And while I'm, I'm very pleased that we were able to finally acquire this property after decades of attempting to do so, I'm wondering what part of the allocation of the budget at this point needs to be specifically identified? Because if we have an RFP that's being described here, but we're not sure what the budget is, is it necessary for us as council at this point to say, this is how much we would like to set aside for this particular aspect of the project? Or is the expectation that at the time when the RFP is about to go out, there will be a visitation to council by staff to try to request the funding? I, I think if we were looking at it prospectively from a responsible, budget-based perspective, then perhaps it would be a good idea to try to identify, I guess, the maximum contours of what a budget for this would look like at this.
Yeah. We would absolutely be coming back to council for authorization. We would pull together the RFP. And part of that process is that we are going to be going out and hoping to get a well, a full-bodied team. And based on the responses that we get and the proposals that we get, then we can come back to council to seek your approval of the responses that we did get and the direction that we're going to go from that point.
I see. Okay, so the actual request for a budgetary allocation, from what I'm hearing you say, Susan, will not happen until we hear back from the RFP proposals, have had a chance to evaluate them. And presumably, the, the respondents, I won't say the bidders because there's no price tag associated. The respondents would be describing a range of, of budget that they would require to undertake those services? Is that? I, I, forgive me, but from my perspective of what I understand of RFPs, that seems a little bit unusual because I usually see an RFP with a particular budget tied to it and a request for a description of the work. So perhaps this is a different species of RFP that I could become a bit more educated regarding.
I'll, I'll interject if you don't mind. The, but what we're preparing now is an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, where we want to, we want to see who's out there, who's the best qualified to deliver a scope of work that is, that will, will be defined. Where we wanna, we wanna see who's out there, who's the best qualified to deliver a scope of work that is, that will, will be defined. Um, we've not developed that scope of work where it's going through the qualification process for, for, um, consultants to deliver the work. Uh, so that, that's what we're describing now. That on- once we define the scope, we'll, we'll get a price from them. And then that's when we would be coming back to council to, to share that. Now regarding the budget, I mean, there, there are funds already. Earmarked for this very purpose for Lawrence Smithy. I mean, if you recall, it's over eight million dollars was earmarked and the acquisition was much less than that. So when we come, the budget is, is there. We'll just be asking for the authorization to expend from that fund.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you for answering these questions. I'm very much looking forward and I think our, our council as a whole is also very much looking forward. To, um, that visit to, um, to, to council in two to three months. With regard to more details as to, uh, the outreach to the, um, to the vendor community. To the community of entities that could be contracting, uh, to help us reach out to our community and design this. Um, I, what I hope will be a jewel of a space, you know, frankly, I hope it becomes like the eastern part of our city's, uh, Stevens Creek corridor. Which was, um, you know, definitively a jewel and remains as such and has been stewarded, uh, so very well. So thanks very much. Um, those are my questions initially. Um, and I would like to, at this point, go to our attendees from the public before we bring it back to council. For another round of questions as well as commentary. Um, so, uh, to clarify and reiterate. Um, please, uh, members of the public, have your hand raised if you would like to speak to this item. Um, and if your hand is raised by the end of our first public commenter, then I will call on you. And if it is not, unfortunately, um, I, I will not call on you. And so you'll have, uh, until the end of when Jean Bedord gets her comments, and I also have Suda Kazumseti after Jean with her hand raised. Welcome, Jean. You'll have three minutes.
Hey, Kirsten, could you make that full screen, please? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I'm here to express my concerns with regards to the work program that you are considering tonight. I feel it's unrealistic to begin with and even more so with the resignation today of our city manager, Deb Feng. Who so capably managed city operations during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next slide. The first issue is mismanagement by this council. Council is responsible for hiring two people. The city manager and the city attorney. Now, there are vacancies at both positions, which is not good for our city. The council's track record retaining senior staff is frankly, abysmal. The work program for this upcoming year leaves both the mandatory housing element and VAALCO under-resourced. In favor of individual council projects. Suddenly, new projects appear on the plan. That have not been rated by other council members or subjected to public scrutiny before tonight. What happened to the promise of transparency? Next slide. Let's look at those last minute projects. They involve a lot of money from the general fund. I have to question two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a G whiz drone show for the Fourth of July. Instead of our traditional fireworks. I have to question three hundred thousand dollars for council commission engagement during twenty twenty-one. The city spent less than that to aid small businesses in twenty twenty. They also spent less money than that for rental assistance. Both of these were benefits to our residents, but three hundred thousand dollars on undefined projects? Makes no sense to me. Then there's the hundred thousand dollars for the Chamber of Commerce building. What is the justification for renovating a building not owned by the city? This is quite questionable. My ask of this council is to reduce the work plan to more realistic levels and make sure each project has a benefit to residents. Not make work for staff and commissions. The city is short-staffed as it is. And the situation will be worse with the loss of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Suda Kazumseti. Welcome, Suda.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, dear council members. My name is Suda Kazumseti, Cupertino resident. And Fine Arts Commissioner Chair. I'm representing myself today. And as all of us are aware, today is a special meeting to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two city work program. And one of the many items that Fine Arts Commission proposed as part of the work program is a proposal to increase the scope of the commission. Looking forward to seeing that approved today. Coming back to other parts of the city work program, last mayor's meeting with commissions. There was a proposal from our mayor to come up with creative ideas to reengage the community for safe return to normalcy. It was interesting to hear so many ideas from different commissions during the meeting. As a fine arts commissioner, I proposed the idea of having posters with safety messages in creative way. In elementary school classrooms, uh, it engages our kids and sends right messages as well. In fact, we can extend this just not to schools, but also public places too. Arts has a very special place in the community and I feel that this is an interesting way to rejuvenate and engage our community with right messaging. As we return back to normalcy in the post-COVID world. I also noticed that there are other interesting ideas like Mayor's Cup Challenge in the work plan discussion today. I'm looking forward to hearing feedback from all the council members and I'm very confident that our council will consider all the community input. To make the right decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suda. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, um, mayor, vice mayor and council members. I'm Connie Cunningham, Chair of the Housing Commission, speaking this evening for myself only. Along with Jean Bedore, I am also sorry to see City Manager Deb Feng leaving the city manager position. She's led the city admirably during the COVID crisis and for the past two years since she has been here. I think that is a great loss to our city. In regard to the city work plan that we are seeing before us, I am happy to see that the ELI, extremely low income housing. Remains on the work plan as item number two. This work item has made good progress in the past two years. Since Mayor Sharp initially led with putting it on the city work plan. It's for, specifically for extremely low-income intellectually developmentally disabled people. Cupertino's general plan clearly states the city's interest in providing housing for all incomes and abilities. Without it, this particular thing, um, project, many, many residents who have been waiting for this housing for decades, literally. Would be left without options near their families, current jobs, schools and services. I appreciate Council Member Way's request to clarify that ELI and BMR housing are being considered. The original ELI project was for intellectually developmentally disabled. The Outback Steakhouse is very recent and is a collaborative project with the county. It is just beginning. I urge the city to make continued progress on the original ELI intellectually developmentally disabled project. Since it has two years of progress behind it. Also, I would mention items six and seven, the plan to end homelessness. I do urge the council to keep this work as a priority during deliberations tonight. COVID nineteen has increased the number of people suffering homelessness. Building housing is the single most effective method to improve this situation. While working on that most basic method, funding services for helping those who suffer homelessness is vital. Note that within that plan, locations for affordable housing are key to solving this seemingly intractable problem of residents suffering homelessness. Funding for building homes has been made available from the state, the county, nonprofit, for-profit organizations. We must find locations. One data point from the general plan is this, between two thousand ten and two twenty forty, Cupertino's population is expected to grow. By twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight residents. I urge the council to maintain the high priority of these items during deliberations this evening and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Connie. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Uh, I am, I will state that I am very sad that Deb is resigned. I blame HCD directly. I blame ABAG. I blame MTC. I blame Rena. You talk about a waste of time. The housing bills have put our city and every city in this state into complete panic. It is manipulation from the Sacramento level and some of our elected representatives. Scott Winger, Nancy Skinner, Senator Atkins ought to be ashamed of themselves. They are elected representatives, but they do not represent everyone in this state. I have spent many, many years coming to these meetings since two thousand and three. And before that, six years at the county with the, during the annexation, I went to the, the county meetings. But I have never seen so much drama and anguish from Sacramento. And attempts to control local cities, take over neighborhoods in the last three years. You talk about a revolution. The time and the money spent. We're having to defend our lives? Uh, why we, I'm ashamed to live in my neighborhood when I bought this house as a poor, single tech worker. Where do these people get off? I, I am, I am, I'm sick of it. It's a travesty. Um, I think that we need to have a very close look at what some of these charities are doing. They are funneling money into the arms of people that are lobbying to take away our neighborhoods. Well, I'm sorry, I have had it. It's time to take our neighborhoods back, to take our cities back. I am proud of our staff. I think we should rehire Deb. She is a jewel. Every staff member is a jewel, but I have never seen so much bedlam in the last three years. As I have seen since two thousand and three and nineteen ninety-five in the county. And I, I had to sit through the Cisco hearings in, from ninety-five to two thousand about what they were going to do with Coyote Valley. This trumps it. I'm sorry, that's a bad pun, but yeah, I have had enough of it. I blame, you, we can't.
Fifteen seconds.
Anything that Rena, HCD or ABAG have. They are worthless. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next and final speaker is Claudio Bono. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Darcy Paul, Vice Mayor Chan, City Council, City Attorney, City Staff. My name is Claudio Bono. I'm the General Manager at the Cupertino Hotel and the Grand Hotel Sunnyvale, but a proud Cupertino resident. Hotels are my passion. When working in the hospitality industry, you never just represent your hotel, you represent the destination. That's why I support the allocation for the Cupertino Visitor Center and the Mayor's Cup Initiative. I think it's a great start to doing meaningful things for our local economy. It will help if we bring individuals that have a working understanding of the hospitality industry and the retail. When it comes to economic development, it all has its advantage. Hotels do not just fill up with corporate seventy-seven. That's why the leisure market is important. We can, travelers are the one that will come and see what our city has to offer. After all, travelers can visit our local shops, go to our local markets, eat at restaurants and being downtown Cupertino. Find the apple signs and take pictures, play even golf or visit our Cupertino wineries. And soon, hopefully, we can actually even have our travels leaving with souvenirs back home. There is a demand for up to two-week program to stay in our city, but nobody knows outside our city or state who to contact. What to do, where to go or where to stay, no guidance at all. That is why the creation of the Visitors Bureau is crucial and urgently needed. Small towns have their own Visitors Bureau and yet count only maybe a population of four thousand, so it's time we actually do it. I fully support Mayor's Paul thoughtful initiative, which clearly reflect his prior leadership as former president of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. The community can and should work together and this is exactly the way we should be doing it. Instead of tearing each other's down, this is how we can actually build each other up. It will provide a place where our city can be represented, a place where information can be given, a better and organized network can begin. In closing, my wish in the long run is to have the Greater Cupertino Convention and Visitor Bureau. All our local businesses, small, medium and large, will actually benefit from it and provide information to all our visitors. That wants to know more regarding our city. Also reclaiming our title of Silicon Valley. Last, uh, wouldn't it be a great idea to have a dedicated space in our city where people around the work can actually celebrate what we're known for? Place, uh, where tourists can take pictures with the apple or Facebook sign in one main area. So that pictures can actually be taken and then last.
Fifteen seconds.
I just wanted to say Cupertino is Silicon Valley, but Silicon Valley is Cupertino. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Claudio. That closes out our public commentary on tonight's special meeting item. I'll take it back to City Council for further questions and deliberation. I do see that there is a, uh, suggested, uh, action and the action is simply to provide any input. And adopt the fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two city work program. And so, um, for, for clarification purposes, um, I think if we have particular input. And you feel my fellow council members particularly strongly about it, I would suggest that, um, you put it into, um, a, a motion format. So that you can, uh, gauge the support, uh, so that there's clarity as to, um, uh, achieving majority support. For, uh, your comments and what you'd like to see go forward. Uh, that's simply a suggestion. I'll open this up, uh, to public, uh, not, I'm sorry, not public comments, but from, uh, our, our, our city council. Uh, again, further questions and comments. And if upon the conclusion of your comments, you would like to, um, move, um. Uh, a, a set of recommendations that you'd like to essentially have, um, the support of the council for. Uh, I'd be happy to, uh, entertain those types of motions. So we don't necessarily have to take an omnibus motion, is what I'm saying. Uh, feel free to bring them as you conclude your remarks. And we have our first hand from Vice Mayor Chow.
Well, I just have some more questions first.
Okay.
Uh, number eight is the Memorial Park. And the description says implement a six-month and twelve-month plan for Memorial Park improvement. Um, but it's four point six million dollars. So this is. Is it just planning? That's not just planning, right? It includes construction, so it's a, a little unclear. And then this, so I guess CIP has more description, but I think here we can be a little more, um.
Okay, uh, Director Lee has his camera, uh, on, in his microphone.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Yeah, that, that's where it gets confusing, having things in the CIP and also in the work plan. The, uh, we do have three CIP projects, if you recall, proposed for Memorial Park. One is to, um, do the, uh, repurposing of the ponds. We have the amphitheater. And then we have the, the, the development of the specific plan that takes us all the way up to a conceptual, uh, design. So that is what, that is what we'll be doing. And, um, when I see this item in the work plan to develop that, you know, six, twelve-month, um, plan. We have that proposed in, in the CIP.
So yeah, can we, um, make the objective a little more, uh, descriptive? Or you can refer to the CIP, uh, plan?
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
It's just planning, that is a little confusing. Yeah. Okay, number five. Um, Lehigh and Stevens Creek. I see that the allocated budget is forty-five thousand and estimated budget sixty-two thousand. Um, so this doesn't include the legal fees that we have to allocate here for this item. Last, um, this year, right?
Correct, this doesn't include that. The scope of this item is to monitor and report on Lehigh. So that involves bringing this to council and having reports on this. Uh, and it also includes the noise and pollution monitoring for those locations.
So that item doesn't have a, a corresponding work program item?
Which item?
The Lehigh and Stevens Creek quarries, um, well, I guess, the different, the legal issues.
No, that's not a separate work. No, that's not a separate work.
Large sum of money like this year and I'm, so would we be allocating more for next year? Or do we have remaining budget for that?
I might need to defer to either our city attorney or our director.
Well, we, we definitely have remaining budget that was established. I forget what fiscal year that was, maybe as early as nineteen twenty uh for that. And so, and that's an example of that, that budget is expended solely for that purpose. And you know, that's a, that's an issue that, that remains. And as, as Director Faro mentioned, we, we did approach that we want to carry that over for that purpose and that's what's been done. So we, we're still working off of that.
I remember we allocated about one million dollars for that project. So how much is spent, how much is remaining as?
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall it being that much, but I, I wouldn't know that dollar amount um like I could find out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll clarify. We, there was a special allocation for um legal services related to the Lehigh and Stevens Creek applications to the county and um and those, we have been working through those and there's still sufficient funds to uh for that work going forward in the next fiscal year. And it's included in the budget.
Um, but it's not included in the work program. That is budgeted under City Attorney's Office.
Correct, the current work program item does not include these legal fees or the legal proceedings.
So, so why is that not a work program item? Because it, this is the issue that we actively monitor. And I, I know that Roger has been uh quite a bit of time following also. Because if it's on the work program, we would be asking for updates and find out where we are.
If you'd like to include that in this scope, we can definitely update that.
Yeah, maybe just this item can include that scope then uh be okay. Okay, number three, revisit five G. I see that the budget, so there is zero allocated budget this year and then we are looking at two fifty thousand for next year. And I thought we are just updating some policies, which we may or may not do. But even if we do it, it's something that even we did last year and it's all done through already allocating staff time. So are we looking at something more? Where's two fifty thousand?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, the, the, the dollar amount is is being able to respond to, to where council may, may, may want to go with this. And it, that could go just a variety of directions. So we're just, we're just making sure that um, you know, we're just being realistic with what, with what the, the dollar amount may be.
But even we have done all the study, right? And then even if the council revised the standard a little bit, that wouldn't take too much time to implement. So why are we, why do we need two fifteen thousand?
Well, I mean, it is identified as a large project within the work plan. So we um, you know, we just, we anticipate um that it is going to continue to, to draw resources to, to be responsive to um, you know, this council and the community's uh needs on this.
But that kind of resource is something the staff has been doing ongoing for the last two years. And that's the normal operation of business.
Well, it's, it's something that we've absorbed at, at, you know, it could be argued effectively at the detriment of some other, other uh programs. So this, this is just recognizing what the costs uh are likely to be.
Um, so usually when I see this large sum, it's because we need to hire consultant to do certain thing. Then you'll see um seventy-five thousand and this two fifty thousand is quite a lot. So all of this will be done in-house, but we need a quarter million. We not, do we plan to hire any consultant for this?
I'm not aware, aware of anyone planned, but that, that may be a, a use for this, depending on what the, what the requirements are.
Putting staff time within two fifty thousand.
Yeah, let me add a little something, having been involved more so with some of the five G responses and some of the data information gathering. Um, and uh forms and or reporting that are being requested by council. We don't know yet, but, but I'll tell you the current workload for five G and there's one and a half maybe, uh, maybe a total of um one work here, don't quote me on that, but um working on it. And the level of detail is just more and more work. So if we, if council is entertaining more work, like more reporting um in addition to the portal that we set up in fall, uh, plus the um interchange between the carrier and the uh carrier, the city and the um, the residents or the community members. It, it could ramp up to something that's, because it's already kind of beyond a normal level of work. Um, these folks are not working singularly just on five G and some other thing. So you have to, we may not use the whole thing, but we're gonna have to put something in there for the amount of effort being expended. It can't be.
I expect to hire consultants for?
You'll probably end up hiring some sort of um someone, well, I can't, I can't figure out, I can't, I don't know the act- actual skill set we would be hiring for. But we would actually have to maybe hire somebody for data. Um, but again, I didn't go into that level of detail uh on this particular item. But the, the workload right now, just on five G and trying to get it all together and managing interactions with the carrier and the employ, and the community members is um kind of far outstripping, which is why we, why the response rate is um not where council necessarily would want it to be.
Yeah, because one carrier just fired, just fired a lot of applications, we did a lot.
Yes, and more carriers will be coming, right?
So, so right now the city staff has been absorbing the cost. Then that means what? If that's the case, I guess I would expect to see as, as a request to add extra staffing for that. Rather than a two hundred fifty line item, two fifty thousand line item here. Because this item usually are not staffing costs, they are usually.
We, we just don't know what direction this is going to go and, and uh, I'm not, I'm not making a statement that anyone does. And we just have to have an amount as a contingency for, to be responsive to.
I guess I'm confused here, because revisit five G itself is just to modify, re, reexamine the standard. What you are saying is whether we, we revisit or not, there will be all these complaints, we will have to respond, that cost would be there. That's not the result of this proposed work program item. That's a result of existing operational cost of handling five G. These two are two different issues, that's not confuse them. So we expect we need the extra staffing to handle existing, even, even we don't change any standard, right? Even if we cancel this whole item, we expect we will need more staffing to handle five G. Um, because the application is coming, complaints are coming.
Um, not, not, so let's do your with or without test, because I think that's a really good way to do it. So let's say you don't do anything more on the guidelines. Um, and the current, the current item, sure, we could use a little bit more, but not if extra reporting and extra management are needed. Um, again, I don't know what the entire thought process was in developing the two hundred fifty thousand dollar estimate. But there is, um, I'm just saying that the current, the current level of what's expected out of the staff in terms of the five G stuff, uh, the five G items and the tech, the data that's, that's wanted or people we want to review the analysis is something we would have to hire out for. Right, we don't have um.
So, um, let me ask, so then that means we should recover the cost from the permit fees that we are charging?
We're way down the road until we scope it, I wouldn't be able to tell you that.
Um, but you are already seeing a lot of, shouldn't you already have some idea right now? How much staff hours is spent on each application? They should, we try to recover that cost from the permit application now, so maybe we should raise the cost right now.
Well, no, we.
We are always seeing a lot.
Yes, and, yeah, and we've done, and we've done that in our fee schedule. Um, but this, this is not inclusive of the staff time. This, this is, these are things that um, I mean, there, we're anticipating there's gonna be a larger demand and focus on this topic and, and this is a contingency for us to be responsive to that. Uh, this, this is not inclusive of our staff time, that's already there.
Um, another, oh, sorry. And on the first page, there are four columns that are now numbered. So the third, um, the fourth column, it mean, um, that's the Torrey Avenue. And I see that the timeline to finish is, is December twenty twenty-two, that's end of this year. And um, but then we need to design the building, figure out what would go there and then we can design. So I'm wondering what's the timeline for when we will be discussing or finalizing what goes in there?
Well, we um, we discussed this in the C I P study session May fourth. Um, it is an aggressive timeline. It's to, it's to do the programming and outreach of feasibility up through design and construction of, of that facility. So I mean, that is our aggressive timeline. Of course, there's gonna be many checkpoints, you know, uh, with council uh to get there. But, but that's gonna be happening, you know, probably, or, you know, by spring of next year.
So um, could you remind me how big is this building?
It's forty-seven hundred square feet, I recall.
I have a little idea that I think it's great that we bought this building that's in the city center. I think I like the Cupertino store idea. However, I think this location would be a better location for Cupertino store in the long run. And then I envision that we may have a space for historical society in there. And then, because it's at a nice little allocated street corner, that's very invisible. People can visit the store, visit a museum, pick up merchandise, take pictures. Maybe we'll have some nice sculptures that people, that represents Cupertino, people can take picture. So then that means, I hope that we will get to talk about all the different uses of this building before we go into the final um construction. Okay. Um, then the, the third column, the third row is the Cupertino store. That, um, there is not a lot of detail there. So how big is that space that we are talking about?
I bel, I believe it's about eleven hundred square feet. It's either nine hundred or eleven hundred square feet.
Think part, I think about nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
I, I talked, I said, I was Angelina, I thought, um, okay. And then the description here is a little misleading. It says renovate Chamber of Commerce building and use a portion of that space to open Cupertino store. Sounds like we are helping them to renovate their own entire building, but we only use a portion. I assume that's not the case. We are likely, um, we will renovate the nine hundred square foot space. And I, I spoke to Angelina, I think she envision and uh mayor envision that we would use the space for maybe um in incubator center or high schoolers can use the meeting room. And a portion of that space is a Cupertino store. I think that's the meaning of this description, but the way it's written, it's um, um confusing. So I wondered, can we ask um if, is Angelina here or maybe she?
I, I don't see Angelina in the attendees.
Oh, okay. She has some ideas on what can go in the space or maybe mayor can. I think we talked about this anyway, just description is uh misleading, that's clarify that description, there we go.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to speak to that. And um, you know, I just want to reiterate, you know, appreciated um the member of the public's comments, uh Claudio Bono, who you know, indicated, you know, let, let, let's not try to tear each other down. I mean, I think we've all been subjected to personal attacks to one degree or the other. But I'm truly not trying to um get any kind of an allocation for a personal proj- project or anything like that. I mean, I think that this would be a really good um measure to take to help uh boost our local retail and restaurant economy uh by attracting visitors that would normally go. Um, or um would not necessarily go to a Chamber of Commerce. But if you were there, at least you would be at a center of uh information for where to potentially go. Um, and I'll also say, you know, I think one of the things that will really help us out with regard to the various um motivations out there um when we do get attacked is our, our recent lobbying ordinance. I mean, I, I think we really get, need to get clarity as to where these motivations come from. Because I just don't see any kind of reason to personally attack me and indicate, well, you know, when I was mayor last time this happened. Like, you know, I, I, I just, I think that frankly is a bit beyond the pale. Um, and in, insofar as these suggestions, I'm honestly, with eighteen months left in my second term, having served the community for six and a half years now, seven years prior to that on Parks and Rec, five years on the Chamber of Commerce Board. Uh, the last year when I was elected as president of the board, I just feel like I have some, um, something to share with regard to what we could potentially be doing. Um, and, you know, helping the community out of the last recession as well in all those contexts. So I think if we have a space there and we're looking to have a, a, a good partnership um with this organization that was in our city. And I've stated in the past, um, the Chamber of Commerce was actually founded before the city of Cupertino was founded. And um the merchants that formed the Chamber of Commerce actually got together, formed it in um, in nineteen fifty-four, the following year. Um, they, uh, one of them incorporated the city of Cupertino in nineteen fifty-five. So, you know, there, there's intrinsic history there and I, I think there's real value to being able to uh foster that kind of a connection. So that's why I would suggest, you know, looking at this particular space that's now available. Um, as Vice Mayor Chow points out, it is nine hundred square feet. Um, what I see it as, um, and, and I have to give Vice Mayor Chow her credit. Um, because when um the, the, the CEO of Chamber, Angel Kouser, was mentioning this as um, you know, a conversational point, Vice Mayor Chow indicated, well, maybe it could be some kind of um incubator space, because that's something that we've been looking at in the past. And I just thought with the Mayor's Cup Initiative, getting a lot of um appreciated support from council um with regard to um all of our council members rating it very highly uh and, and the particular topic on plastics. Um, I just thought when you look at the uh idea of incubating public ideas, um, it is actually a pretty good um space if you're looking for an outward facing, you know, public uh input gathering um location to um have something that's not necessarily right at uh where the Chamber of Commerce conducts its business, but it's in the same building. And um, that started a conversation with regard to having a, a fairly unique type of space where we were envisioning originally an online store. Uh, all online for Cupertino, um, you know, branded material. But if we were able to have some of that physical material available, um, it's still something that, that draws people. You know, we're not in a complete, you know, uh mail order retail world anymore. There is still something to be said for physical spaces. Um, when people come and eat at our restaurants, they are in a physical space. When they stay at our hotels, they are in a physical space. And so um, we could potentially, potentially have a location where we've never had um the types of materials that people, if they want to show a, a point of pride in Cupertino, perhaps give, you, you know, a, a sweatshirt or a Cupertino branded material to, to friends or family. We've never had somewhere they could go to look at that. And I, I think that's a real uh lacking point in our city. So um combining those two ideas, you know, I thought, why not? Why not try to use this as a, a meeting space, a, a very unique type of meeting space where people can go and. Get an idea, a flavor of not just our, our city, of the civic pride of our city, but also the idea of our public engagement. Um, and, and I thought it paid really good homage to um the historical roots of what really has made the city tick in the last. Uh sixty six to sixty seven years. That being said, I can completely take this relief, this, I mean, you know, if it doesn't get council support, then I, I'm totally fine with it. But um, I, I, I will say that if it is indeed a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, Vice Mayor Chow is absolutely right. This is not us taking public money and renovating their space, because typically, um, their rents are three, four thousand dollars a month. So you multiply that by twelve, you at our, you are at approximately fifty thousand dollars, so I'm not suggesting that we take the entirety of this. Um, you know, renovate the space and rent it, um, what I'm suggesting is that we have at least an equal partnership. And I will point out that the Chamber of Commerce um does have uh members that are able to go in and fix up a space. Um, without, uh, you know, having to, to, you know, get to the point where. We're going through our public bidding process, and so if it's a true partnership, we're not fixing up their building. You know, we're getting into a space where they put something on the table that is at least equal to what we would be putting on the table. We could, you know, be getting the material, staff added twenty five thousand dollars as, as so-called startup costs. And I think we could be creating a, a very singular space for our student population as well, a lot of people. And our student population want exposure to uh working experience, to public experiences, and to be able to tie this to. Um, you know, a, a council initiative that intersects with public policy as well as outreaches to. You know, various components of the community, I think, you know, Chamber is a natural um intersection point there. So um, Vice Mayor Chow, thank you for the opportunity to kind of describe and kind of clarify. Uh, the original genesis of, of this idea, and, and it is true, it is, it is multifaceted, um, to the extent that. It's been broken out into two separate um items at this point, I think that, you know, we don't necessarily have to. Um, you know, look at it in the way I'm originally envisioning it, but that's, that's the vision, and hopefully that helps to illustrate. Uh, what, what I was thinking in terms of, you know, this particular uh requested allocation.
So sorry, I said I'm done, but can I comment, I don't want?
Um, well, actually, um, Vice Mayor Chow said, this is the only item, and I, I want to be, you know, kind of give people. More of a, a free flow of ideas, uh, but let me go to the other hands raised for a bit, and we can, you know, round robin this. So in, in order, we have Councilmember Way, Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Willie, uh, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, I really like the vision, and I think it's a great vision to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce. And our local businesses, um, I wish I should twist it a little bit, I visit the Chamber very often, we have meetings there. It is a very limited space and it's kind of isolated, this is a great project if we can incorporate into our Torrey Avenue. Um, area and then, uh, and also to envision a store, yes, that's really great and have brochures. But almost of the visitor center is either on Main Street or in hot, close to hotels where people are there. It'd be very difficult to draw people to a location that's isolated, so, you know, the vision. Uh, we live in Silicon Valley, I love the vision, Mayor Paul, I think it's great, and I listen to Claudia, you know, this collaboration is really great. But we live in this information highway, if we could, yes, have a physical store where people can really see things, but. In each hotel, a corner of Main Street, we have a um electronic. How do I say that, uh, I'm not so good at that, electronic information, people can hit it and know where to visit. And where the merchandise are offered, where do they can order it or pick it up somewhere, I think that's what we need, we need in each hotel lobby. And in, um, visible places um in front of a restaurant and places in front of the library. Or, uh, you know, are in Torre New, Torre Places, this is the vision I see, I, I love your vision. And I think we could really expand this and work with our merchants, not just bring merchants, uh, people to them, but also. Bring people to our stores, to our online, uh, it's, it's not really online, a physical place that's attractive, you can. No, if I walk on the street and I see attractive thing, hey, look at this and I would, can play with it, see things. That's my vision, I, I, and you're to add to your vision, I think it's really a great uh combination. I, I really don't think the Chamber area is a, a, a location that's attractive and it's very small. There's no way that the high schools can go there to in the incubate, incubation, it, it's, it's a really small place. And it's an isolated place, I'm hoping this vision can be expanded to areas that people will really visit, and so. I don't quite get my, if I don't quite get my visions, maybe uh, uh, my fellow council members can add to it, so I really like the idea. And I think to work with the Chamber is really great, and we can build this up when we're doing our, um, you know, total revision. And then work with the main street, work with other developments, everywhere in the corner of our Cupertino, where people are there, in every hotel lobby. That's where we can really, um, um, you know. Tell people where to visit in Cupertino, where the wineries, the great pictures there, and yes, a physical place too, but Chamber is just not. My, I think it's, the location is just too isolated, that, that's my comment.
Well, I appreciate your, your input, uh, Councilmember Way, and i- you know, i- it's. Uh, precisely the kind of ideas that you're sharing right now is, 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 is the crux of the vision. It, it's, it's a, a matter of creating spaces where people can exchange ideas and that can be brought to action. Um, so, you know, whether it's put here or somewhere else, I mean, I'm just really glad that, you know, you're, you're utilizing your, your imagination and creativity. To think of something like a touchroom kiosk at various places, and, and I will, you know, I'll, I'll defend a bit the, you know, original idea. Um, it's true, that space probably wouldn't accommodate more than, you know, seven or eight people at a time. Um, comfortably who are in, in a working condition, but I think, you know, putting some resource into it. You could actually turn it into a, a, a very usable space in that regard, a- and again, you know, it is where the existing. Um, Chamber of Commerce of our city, um, sits at the moment. But uh, but I, I really, I greatly appreciate your thoughts, and that's really what it's about in terms of um my perspective, trying to get people. You know, kind of getting the, 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 the brain juices flowing, so to speak, so. Um, we have Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I'm personally opposed to, to renovating uh the, the Chamber building, however, it might be a nice location. Uh, if you can coordinate with the Valco developer to have a visitor's center at, at Valco, because it's going to be a very large um project. Uh, I have a question, uh, and it has to go, going back to our, a previous um. Uh, item that we had, item sixteen on uh May eighteenth, and I'm wondering if, if we did approve this. I'm concerned about some of the budget carryovers which are showing up. In, in Attachment C, which is showing interim city hall having a budget carryover of four hundred and sixty five thousand and twelve dollars. And a new city hall with a budget carryover of, of three point five million dollars. Um, and there's another line in here, city hall and permit center remodels for forty five thousand dollars, so I would, this, I'd like some. Uh, clarification about this, uh, because in our uh work program. We have uh an item just to look at alternatives um with city hall. And that's, uh, to my recollection, that's uh twenty five thousand, yes, investigate alternatives to city hall. However, this, this amended budget detail as of March thirty first, twenty twenty one, is showing. A huge amount of allocation, so I would like to have that uh question answered by staff.
Okay, um, so there are multiple parts and um concerns uh reflected in Councilmember Moore's question. Uh, would anyone on staff, first of all, like to talk about uh the initial allocations uh to city hall? Um, and one of them was more than three million, one of them was somewhere around four hundred something thousand, Director Lee.
Yes, those um allocated amounts, they, that sounds correct, uh, Councilmember Moore. Uh, as, as we have a proposed project for our, for city hall, community hall. Um, that, that very ma- very well may lead to um renovation of our current city hall. And that's been estimated to cost, you know, forty, in a forty million dollar range. So the, the idea of those funds being there, they would only be used for a purpose for the city hall, there's no intent of staff to be spending those monies right now. But they are there as, as, they, think of them as a, as a reserve for what may happen. When we complete that process that's being proposed for city hall, community hall.
Okay, so we, we actually were discussing doing a seismic retrofit, and so I'm a little surprised to see new city hall. And an interim city hall, I can understand the interim part, but the, having it labeled as new city hall, um, that, that concerns me. Uh, so it's.
Uh, let, 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 let me jump in, I, I want to, I want to be able to clarify this, we don't want to put any kind of, we, we want to put complete information out there. Um, that is a, a holdover from the Valco specific plan. Uh, correct, Director Lee, um, that, that was part of the idea that we would have a wormshell created for city hall.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, that is correct.
Okay, so given the fact that that is, that's just not there anymore, I mean, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, that's not there, and so. Would it perhaps make sense because that the underlying project's not there anymore? Uh, and, and I believe this is actually a recommendation by staff, that we take this allocation. Or, I, I'm not sure where the four hundred thousand fits in it, but I think that's part of the same thing. Would it make sense if that's the case to take those two allocations and basically say, we're no longer allocating it for this purpose? Uh, because the underlying project itself is just no longer there.
And that, and that would be at council's discretion, I, I, I recall this coming up, and it was Councilmember Willie had, had brought this, this point up, and we um. And I, and I, and I believe we went back to, to clarify how, how those projects are on hold. Um, because, you know, someone looking at this and says, well, you know, here we are looking at a new city hall for, for this amount of money. While we have this other process going, so I, I recall, we went back to clarify that we aren't, you know, these are on hold. Um, you know, until a future date, and that, and that would, would only occur after we, we do, um, you know, the study for the current city hall and community hall.
Right, you get another project, right, I mean, not to.
Yeah.
Kind of repeat myself, okay, so if we had another project, we could always, we could always allocate these numbers again. Right, because, you know, these numbers are kind of specific to the um prior project that this was tied to. Because the wormshell required a certain amount of uh money, uh, the, the four hundred thousand, I believe, some, some odd. And then at another point, it required the three million something, and those were tied to that specific project, right?
Yeah, they were.
They were, yeah, so, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, with Councilmember Willie having, you know, expressed that concern, and now. Um, Councilmember Moore is expressing it, I, I, I just, I feel like it makes complete logical sense, I mean, i- if, if part of the work plan item. Associated with city hall is a, a matter of cleaning up or, you know, or backlog, so to speak. Um, I mean, you're freeing up essentially four million dollars, I mean, to, to me, that makes, that makes complete sense. And frankly, something that probably should have been done at around the time, probably in conjunction with. Um, the specific plan no longer being a, a project on the table. So thank you, Councilmember Moore, I just wanted to put in that clarification as to where we sat and, and where the context of that. Um, a couple of numbers were, you also had a, a number of other issues that you raised in your first. Uh, comments slash question, did you want staff to speak to those other items at this point and to remind us what those were?
Well, yeah, it's, it's a little difficult from the interruption to uh go back to that. I do actually, there was a member of the public that was concerned about us wasting money, and I, I am very respectful about that concern. And, and I share it as well, uh, so, but I don't appreciate the ad hominem attacks that occurred, I think that those are inappropriate. Um, so, uh, also, when I look at this uh item, the proposed city work plan, the, on the first page. Uh, it, to my recollection, there was a request for a Cupertino store and then a logo change. But I don't recall the Chamber of Commerce item being added on there, so that to me was, was kind of a surprise, and. Uh, I, for me, um, with the request for funding for that, I had made a request that Stockton Meyer. Um, he, he worked on, he's owned that uh building and let it uh fall into some level of disrepair since two thousand and two. And uh, it's not on the work plan, we have an obligation according to our municipal code to maintain our buildings, maintain our structures. And yet, it's not being done, and we're, now it's at a point where it has to become a work plan item. Um, and, and we're not being good stewards for the property that we already have. And so I, I don't like the idea of, of galloping off and, and to go uh. Renovate someone else's structure when we can't even take care of what we've got. Uh, and also with that, with regards to our, you know, the seismic retrofits that need to be conducted in the city, uh, we, we definitely need to do that. Um, I have another question regarding, uh, we supported city councils unanimously. Supported the plan to end homelessness for the county, and so I am concerned about the money that is being. Um, appropriated for that locally, if we are going to be participating in a regional. Uh, countywide program, and I was wondering if perhaps Deb has an update on that and what is envisioned. Um, for us to be doing in the future in order to assist that, because I don't want it to be like our shuttle program. Where Cupertino is, is doing a shuttle program and Mountain Dew's doing one and Palo Alto, everybody's doing their own. We're duplicating work and we're collectively wasting a lot of money, so do you have any um update on that?
Uh, if you mean by update, what our part in, in the um county's plan to end homelessness, yes, you're correct that. Um, of course, this is not what you're asking me to do, but I'll, I'll summarize, uh, each city is being requested to, to adopt that. But underneath there is a city effort to do something that supports that um plan. So with the support of that plan, the items that you see, um, that would be related to that in the work program. Are part of the city's effort to support that plan with what's happening in Cupertino, if that makes any sense. Ben, did you want to add anything to that?
No, no, that's, that's, that's correct, we um, coun- council, uh, I believe in December twenty, twenty twenty, uh. Uh, endorse the county's community plan to end homelessness, twenty twenty, twenty twenty five, so, um. We are participating with the county and you, you see the work program item that, that um identifies uh that particular item as well, so no, you're, you're correct then.
Uh, now with regards to the drone show, um, I, I personally uh would want to have more. Public engagement to see if uh, who is interested in doing this. Uh, I'm a little concerned that it might be something that's more appropriate for Apple to have for their, for their employees or for. Uh, Great America to, to do this, or, or some, some, somewhere else and, and some other entity doing it. Before we be the first one uh as a, as the city doing this, um, so I, I'm definitely concerned about um that. And I will leave it at that, I'll ask some other questions in a, in a few minutes, thank you.
Okay, great, we have Councilmember Willie next, followed by, uh, I think Vice Mayor Chow, you've, you've had a turn, so. Um, let, let's stop it at Councilmember Willie for now, Councilmember Willie.
So, um, yeah, um, boy, uh. I, I'll start with, you know, that I've heard a lot of uh good. Suggested objective clarification and definition. On these different ob- uh, items, but I'm not hearing that. Those necessarily are being incorporated, and so my first one is, you know, clarification that. You know, I'll go ahead and list the, the items that I'd like more detail and clarification put in them. How do we direct staff, I mean, we're all here to say, hey, we agree with these uh. Additional clarification and description, but I, I'm worried that after this whole process. That all our comments, you know, prior work plan meetings. Brought us the updates in the subsequent, and we're doing one more iteration, but to kind of. Uh, close the issues tonight, if we can say yes, uh, when, when we bring up a particular item. Like the item number two and this additional definition and stuff, okay, do we all agree, or is there a mo- majority, okay, staff. You've got your, your uh direction on that, and then we kind of press on, so at the end of tonight, we say, okay. You know, we, we now have better definition, everybody's uh in agreement. Work plan's ready to go.
Yeah, you know, that's a great point, John. And and that was what I was trying to get at at the very uh beginning of the um this period. When I was suggesting that council, um, when you feel the time is right individually, bring a motion. And if you have, for example, six things that you want adjusted. I would, I would recommend that you make six separate motions. And if you wanna try to uh gather support. And and so I think this is a good round initially, so that we can kind of hear others' thoughts uh and get an idea, you know, kind of like an informal straw poll type idea of uh where others are. You know, you know, feel free to modify your asks. And so, um, I I will just let everyone know, if you put something on the table, I will go ahead and second it. So that we can go ahead and take uh a a gauge of council. And that and that staff has clear direction going forward. Um, and hopefully that when we bring the work program back, uh, this session will have satisfied us that, you know, look, if we have particular ideas that we wanna see changed, at least it just didn't go into a void. Because, you know, um, I, an individual council member alone, made that comment. And there wasn't a clarity as to whether that change wanted was 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 to be directed by the majority of council. So so thank you for that comment. And uh where I see us at right now is that we're all speaking um and collecting our thoughts. And so if you are ready with a list of items, feel free to start taking them off and getting the ball rolling on on that uh process that could give um very clear direction going forward.
Okay, great. So I'll start with item number two. On previous year uh work plans, it seemed, my memory is that we actually had one that dealt with housing and identifying additional sites. And I'm not seeing that in our current work plan. But I would like to include it in item two. The ELI with Mary Street and Outback. I would like to add the uh description that it includes the city's uh ability to be looking for site. I believe in like the last six months, uh, a resident alerted us that there is a house on McClellan Road on a large lot that was available. And, you know, via an email to us, and that maybe the city wanted to look into that. If we don't have a owner for doing something like that, then it's gonna be a non-issue. But if we make that part of this task, be on the lookout for property, okay, decent point. Here, let's assume here's a site on McClellan Road. It's a point five uh acre site. And so city staff would simply do a quick feasibility check on it. Is it uh sandwiched in high density or a very uh 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 traditional neighborhood that would not fit a multi-story, um, even though a low-income uh type of thing? And then say, these are the options that the city council could consider. Okay, it would be single-story and it would be small units and this and that. And at least it would get the ball rolling. So my motion on that is to add to you tonight uh item two to be uh investigating additional uh sites for housing, preferably B R M or E L I, you know, um, housing. So that's my first ask.
Okay, so that's uh just a correction, uh, B M R. And and so this this item is about E L I, um. Okay, so the uh uh Outback Steakhouse. Yeah, so so this 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 item is specifically describing E L I housing on city-owned property along Mary Avenue as well as the Outback Steakhouse location. So so, John, you would like to expand it to include B M R generally, right? And um to have um the ability to look at other sites for potential uh E L I or B M R housing?
Absolutely, yes. Well, well stated, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Did, uh, let's go ahead and, um, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, did you have your hand raised for a comment or a question on this?
Uh, comment.
Okay.
So I I was done, yeah, are you taking?
I realize that, but you have a motion on the table. I wanna be able to get that disposed of before you go into your next item.
Which item is that?
What's that?
What's the number? The E O I?
It's it's item number two. It's on page uh three of the proposed city work program document. Okay, um, council member Wade, did you have a question or a comment on this as well?
Yes, I have a I have a comment, please. Council member Willie, that's a great idea to explore new uh sites. But work plan needs to be specific, specific. This work plan is about the Mary Avenue for E L I and Outback Steakhouse for B M uh e- either E L I or a below-market rate and a specific work plan the staff can work on. That what you other proposal, it would have to be another work plan. Because we want spec- city plans to be done. And I love your idea to explore other areas. But I think in our arena allocation, that's where we probably will put that in there too. So I think we need to stick to the specific plan and uh to both locations. I did recommend add the B M below-market rate housing because that's what a Outback Steakhouse with the conkey, that's what a state floor. We, if we just have E L I housing for development disabled, we're not including the state house, Outback State House options. So I like your idea, but I think it's a totally two different work plan. And work plan needs to be specific so that with the with the budget, so we can, the staff can actually work on it.
Okay, uh, council member Moore, you're next with a hand up. Did you have a question or a comment on council member Willie's proposal on the table?
Uh, yes, so how's this process going to work? Because you you're allowing one one work plan item to be discussed and modified. So I'm going to assume, because you've started down this process road, that you're going to allow each and every one of these, if we wanna do some modification to it, that you're gonna allow each and every one of these work plan items to um be discussed and um altered. Is that correct?
Uh, I I I hope it doesn't go to each and every one of the work plan items. But but yes, that's essentially um what I see as the the purpose of our discussion.
Okay, so I had, uh, at a at a previous uh meeting, I had mentioned there is a a very large, um, it's a storage area off off of McClellan. And it's next to a church area and residential. I don't know if that is a viable site. It was running for about eight million dollars. However, I agree with uh council councilman Willie to uh look at other sites and not lock ourselves in. And we don't know what's going to be happening down the road. Plus, uh, you know, I have mentioned it before about Mary Avenue because this was a project. That was a street area that had come to um the planning commission before because it has the uh the the green um stormwater infrastructure plan for it in order to have the the birmingham and groundwater recharge. So there are other areas in the city where this could potentially um be built. And I don't think that locking ourselves in is in our best interest. My other question regarding this process, if we are going item by item, I would assume that that means that we're going to have a vote? We're doing a deliberation on it on this particular motion?
Yes, and so, you know, a- as a result, I I would really appreciate it if we would kind of stay on focus on the particular change that's being, um, you know, proposed. I I I mean, I I realize the scope is very broad and looking at other sites could implicate the entire geography of Cupertino. But I would ask that we not try to do that and just try to speak to that particular change.
Uh, okay, so this is basically uh to add B M R plus other sites?
Yes.
Yep, simple. Okay, so but so we're gonna finish our deliberation on this item and you'll call the vote. And we'll and then we'll move on to the next, is that correct?
That is the idea.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, did you already speak to this? Did I call?
I my comment was for another item, but I'll speak on this first, I'll comment.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking to speak to it if you didn't have an original comment. But um, it's a motion on the table for uh council member Willie's uh requested modification.
Second that, did anyone second it?
I seconded it. I already said that I'll provide.
Do you want to hear my comment on this item before we vote?
No, please do. Yes, please make the comments.
So this particular item, actually, the description already is not specific. It talks, it's a jumble of stuff. Talks about two E L I sites plus find a way to build moderate income and engage with Habitat for Humanity. These two item actually don't even belong there because that's different from E L I. And I think council member John, I mean, Willie's proposal adding on the idea that we actively identify on a res- for residents or even housing commission members to help identify a site that might open up at any time. And this is unrelated to housing element sites because we'll have to identify those sites by the nick- end of next year. But in the next whole eight-year housing element cycle, if any house comes up for sale or anything, we could then identify that, maybe it's a good site for a good uh E L I housing that we never know. So this is uh saying that, okay, we should um look out for that. And I think that's a really good idea. Maybe it should even be a policy we include in the housing element that we proactively look for sites to develop, not just waiting here for something to fall in our lap. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And council member Moore, you're, uh, well, let me go back to council member Willie. Who's hand is still is raised?
Oh.
Did you wanna speak to the comments that were made?
I'll leave it where it's at. If that we can vote on the next item, I might provide some additional process uh suggestion.
Okay, sounds good. Council member Moore?
Okay, um, just for clarification, are we all on attachment B, the red line? Or are you on attachment A?
I have A.
A.
Okay, so you're on A, alrighty. So we're gonna go to A two. And my A two does not say Habitat for Humanity. Mine says, consider options to develop E L I housing for developmentally disabled individuals on city-owned property along Mary Avenue as well as the Outback Steakhouse location. And that's it. So that's my, that's my attachment A. Do you, people all have that?
Yes.
That's not saying that, right? And then all we're doing with this motion is to add uh B M R plus other sites.
Oh, that's good. I I was wondering, are we still engaging with that, with them? But how come it's different?
Uh, the previous version had it. Previous version had Habitat for Humanity and now attachment A has been simplified.
Yeah, the uh staff put the latest one in the envelopes. And so I picked this one up. I wanna say on Friday, they sent out an email saying that they had printed out updated work plan and left it for us.
I see, I'm looking at attachment B, the red line for it.
Oh, the B, yeah.
No wonder, okay.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call vote on council member Willie's uh proposed change regarding item number two's uh objective. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that roll call vote?
Council member Moore?
Aye.
Council member Way?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Way voting no.
Okay, um, council member Willie, you had a process-oriented question. I I I think maybe it makes sense to go in a roundtable uh in terms of uh descriptions of proposed changes. Is that something that was um captured in your suggestion? Or what was your process-oriented suggestion?
I I was just gonna suggest to the council. So we already added work plan items to this coming work plan. And I I feel that we're not allowed to add new work plan items. So if we don't capture the essence of what we're after tonight here, we cannot do it until next year's work plan. And that's why, even though it may not fit in a nice clean box, as long as it captures the essence, if if a resident sent us an e- for this case in point, if a resident sent us an email that they saw there was a uh a site for sale and we have nobody at city staff responsible for something like that, it's not gonna get consid- in my view, it's not gonna get considered. It's gonna be an email that's just gonna go un-un uh unread, undelved with. But at least if we have something like this, our city manager could take the email over to the desk of the person assigned to this task and say, by the way, here's a site that's been identified. Um, could you have someone, uh, you know, spend uh five or ten hours and investigate? How many of these little homes could they pop on this site? And is it, is it even feasible? And just leave it at that. They don't have to prove anything. And then that comes back to us before it's watering the bridge. That's my, you know, these other work plan items. If we see something that we think would somehow improve the work plan item, let's, let's go ahead and put it there. We're, we're not trying to tie anybody's hands or or force anything, but we wanna be sure. City manager can come back to us at any time and say, you know what? Ten acre site just became available? It's gonna take uh two hundred hours? Will you fund that?
Okay, John, let's um, let let's go, since we have approved your modified changes.
So I'm just alerting, yeah.
I I see what you mean by the process-oriented uh suggestion that you have. Uh, well, let me, let me, as chair of the meeting and in interest of, um, and this is great, you you passed it four to one. And I think it's a very legitimate um mechanism to kind of gauge that. Let me, let me go each to the council members and give them each an opportunity to 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 bring forth a suggestion uh on a modification of the work plan uh that we have in front of us in attachment A before we go back uh to your your second item. And so the next hand that I have raised is from Vice Mayor Chow, followed by council member Moore, followed by council member Way. And then I'll, and then I'll make my first suggestion after that. So Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay, so I'll first finish my earlier comment regarding, um, first regard regarding the the chamber space, okay? So I think, yeah, we, I think I'd like to, um, I think our mayor responded to the resident on the attack. I'd like to clarify that. Before that, there was interim city manager. Before the interim city manager, the previous city manager retired. And then Deb, we, when we interviewed Deb, we interviewed some really experienced, excellent city manager. But the majority of council saw that Deb, the talent in Deb, even though she has no city experience. But we saw that she.
Uh, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chow, I I really need to call point of order on this item. We're, we're, we're here to focus on the work plan. And while I appreciate your sentiments, um, I I think that uh we we should allocate time at another uh point to talk about what you're you're delving into at this, at this point. So, um, within the parameters of what I'm asking for, if you have any kind of modifications to a work program item that we have in front of us in attachment A, please, please make the comments to that and then we can consider it.
I think the reason I say that also is because I think that's not hold grudges against each other. That's, I, we, we might disagree on one issue, but we might agree on a hundred other issue. So at first, I was on the fence about the chamber item. And, you know, we know, you know, our history. But then I've been friendly with Angelie. And so I thought I'll call her up and find out what exactly she has in mind. And and then that's why I called her. And I have, so I've called her, um, occasion on this kind of thing. So I think, let's move on. We can be friendly on other issues, even though when we disagree on one. So I had a good discussion with Angelie. Here's what she has in mind. I think in many cities, you see chamber is right next to visitor center. Because that is where a lot of time. Because that's where a lot of times visitors come to a, um, a place you. They, they, here you can find out where to eat, where to shop, and you might pick up coupons. And this is where you can, we can promote businesses for Cupertino. And so it might be a natural fit, fit, however, I also am concerned about the space is too small. So like I said earlier, I would rather maybe eventually we move it to Torrey when it's ready. But it's not ready now. And then now we want to help with the economical recovery. So maybe in the interim, we can do the pilot in chamber. And Angelie will help run the program. And the hundred, I believe a hundred thousand is not all for renovation, it's including also programming. And then she can hire interns to help, uh, man, man the store. And, and then there will be an agreement between city and chamber that's mutually beneficial. So that because we won't be paying the rent. And then they, 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 so we will both have, have something, but also give something. And that, that's, that's. So that's what I got after the conversation, I thought. If this is a good idea to as a pilot, so that we don't have to wait for another year for Torrey to finish to start this, to, to promote business. Um. But yeah, eventually I do envision that I want this to be moved to Torrey, consider a store. Maybe a small business center. And historic museum. And also Cupertino actually has a lot of home businesses. They, this will be a venue for them to display their product, they can meet their clients. And also another idea that in response to highways, um, envision. That we want to have something that can bring Cupertino community together. I am, I have envisioned, had this in mind for a while. I wish we can have, um, maybe a weekly Friday afternoon gathering in front of the plaza in front of between city hall and the library. It could be, uh, like from five to seven o'clock, a Cupertino got talent show. And kids can sign up to do a two, three minutes, uh, song, speech, or anything, or dance. And or it could be a line dancing, because in, in China, in Taiwan, we often have. A plaza that people get together, they're today, so this will be a community thing. It doesn't have to be always in plaza, we can move around to the stockings.
I, I apologize for interrupting you, but, um, we're, we're trying to identify particular items. And see if there are modifications to be made. I understand what you're saying, but we can't bucketize that into a particular item. Um, unless you're looking to, um, bring forward a motion where we would be. Uh, affecting multiple items at the same time, which I'm happy to entertain.
I do have a motion with multiple items.
But, but please, please, I'm sorry?
I do have a motion with multiple items that I'm getting into.
Okay, so you're basically putting that forward at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and did you, did you, well.
So I finished my pitch for the weekly Friday gathering.
Right, so, but I asked that you do one at a time. And the reason I ask that you do one at a time is that people might not agree with one, but they might agree with another. So if you could, you know, put, put one motion up forward. Um, because of course with, with Councilmember Willie, he put forward one. We talked about it, we voted on it, right? And so I asked that you do the same thing, put one forward, let's talk about it, let's vote on it. And so now you've, you've talked about two things, you've talked about, um, the, uh, the, 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 the store, the Cupertino store. As well as your idea about, um, some kind of, you know, performance art, uh, space. So, so I ask that you put forward one thing so that we can, you know, get council direction on that particular item first.
Yeah, so here we have, um, on row two, the pet program and Cupertino store in Torrey, do I, should I go that in order?
Um, let me let you make that determination, but pick one and let's move forward with that.
Okay, maybe I'll just, um, do row three first, since I just spoke about that. So I'd hope this item we could add more details and clarify that, uh, the hundred thousand covers renovation and programming cost. With an agreement signed between the chamber and the city that's mutually beneficial.
Okay, um, I, I would, I would be willing to support a motion that directed that before. Any allocation is made, that we make, uh. Make specific details as to what is being covered and that we generate an agreement. Um, between the city and chamber if we go forward with this. I, in, in fact, I, I'm even willing to take the money off the table largely. And say, let's go forward for the time being, uh, with, with a, with enough to, you, you know, obtain the store items. So that we go forward the store and try to, uh, make this work plan item investigation. Um, and, uh. Interface with the, with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, to see whether this becomes, um, a tangible possibility, you know, once those details are defined. So, would you be willing to afford that motion? Um, because, you know, obviously, uh, the monetary ask is a bit of a heartbreak, um, a heartache, uh, point for some. Um, or, or, or did you wanna keep that allocation in your motion?
I think a hundred thousand would be like a cap, right, no more than that. And then we are not likely we will get a break on the rent, um.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go forward with what you have written here. Um, so Vice Mayor Chow, you bring forward a, a motion, uh, as, as described and as written. That you wanna clarify that a hundred thousand dollars covers the renovation and the programming costs. With an agreement signed with the chamber that's mutually beneficial with the city. And, um, with regard to the store, staff has added twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the materials costs of, of store. Um, so are you specifying that a hundred thousand dollars includes that cost for materials as well?
No, I think I'm just adding what's not there, so twenty-five thousand for. So this is already there, it's like even close.
Okay, so that's, that's there and what we have on attachment A. Okay, so before proceeding, uh, we would enter into an agreement and that would need to be entered into, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask council, um, if there are, uh, comments to your motion on the table. Uh, I'll start with Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Way and then Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore.
Um, thank you, uh, yes, I certainly support the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce and I, many years ago, uh. Had attended many Chamber of Commerce meetings, uh, in the Torrance area. And we certainly need to support our small businesses and our large businesses in Cupertino. However, as a matter of principle, I will not support Cupertino renovating. And or occupying in any way the Chamber of Commerce building. We have many structures and which, which need to be worked on in Cupertino. And I've, you know, brought up the Stocklemeier House, so, you know, we're ignoring our own responsibilities that we have to our own community. And you're off going to benefit the chamber and, uh. We also do have a very longstanding relationship with the Chamber of Commerce where staff time is used, uh. To present to the Chamber L A C meetings and, uh, we do have a very, uh, cordial relationship with them in the city. So I do think that there was some mischaracterization there, which is, which was unfortunate. Um, so I cannot support this, uh, this motion at all.
Okay, uh, let's go to Councilmember Way before Councilmember Willie.
Um, okay, um, I totally understand, um, Councilmember Moore's position. And I do like this project, so, um, I would like to, uh, propose a substitute motion.
Okay, what's your substitute motion?
Okay, it's the, oh, it's a city work plan that's to investigate the, um. Chamber of Com, working with Chamber of Commerce to develop, look, you know, uh, merchandise corporation internship programs. But to develop a, identify future store locations within the city that's city owned. And, um, this is the one year program, so it's more like investigation, uh, coming up with, I don't know exactly how to say it, coming up with a plan, it's a planning. And I like what dark, uh, Mayor Paul says, we really don't need the monetary, cause this is a planning session. That, um, we can plan with the city of, uh, the Chamber of Commerce collaboratives, um. Okay, somebody needs to put this champ, this emotion with, for, with me. And the motion is to a, a city plan to plan with the, uh, collaborate with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. To plan a, um, collective work with, uh, future merchandise and locations, maybe possible kiosks. So, uh, it's a planning session instead of a monetary and monetary can come back after we, um, have the plan set, set, set forth. Does that make sense?
I, I, I think I get the general gist of what you're saying. You're, you're really talking about at this point having, um, discussions with, um.
Right, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a solid discussion that we're gonna come up with a plan. Where are the merchandise gonna be, uh, where is the future, um, you know, look at the city properties, what is gonna be in Torrey? Is it gonna be, uh, but, uh, Councilmember Moore sets locations? So secure a location for a store, a vis- visitor center. But work with the chamber to promote, uh, where chamber think is the best place to place the, uh, merchandise. So it, it, it's, cause I think we need to plan it ahead of time first. So this is a, is a city work plan to, um, to work with the chamber to come over the plan.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate the sentiment of, um, what you're expressing. I'm just not sure whether it's, is properly captured in a, in a motion format at this point. So, um, I, if you, um, I, I don't wanna put, you know, words in what you're intending.
Can I respond?
You can interpret that a little.
As the motion maker?
Um, okay, as the maker of the motion, Vice Mayor Chow.
So I think my motion says to come up with a mutually beneficial agreement. That means we will be having the conversation on what kind of, um, store it is. And then my other motion I was going to make, but I didn't is row four, which is a Torrey. I think my vision is eventually I hope the store we will move to Torrey. Then the, at the chamber location is a pilot. And then we are already developing the council, work, working things out. Uh, so that was the idea, um.
Um, let me, let me see if, um, and, 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 but, and, and Councilmember Way, um. I, let, let, let me respectfully ask if I can try to modify the motion on the table to speak to your concern.
Yes.
Is that okay if we?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, great, thank you, um, Vice Mayor Chow, could we perhaps define a time limit to your motion? To state that, um, the beginning of the fiscal year is July first. And to work in the three, uh, the first quarter of the fiscal year, uh, July, August and September to see if, uh. Uh, to, to see if, um, a draft agreement can be re, can, can be, um. Presented to council for approval. Uh, and if by that time, uh, a, a draft agreement can't be reached. Then we will go ahead and, uh, not proceed since, um. You know, you're already a quarter of the way through the fiscal year by that point. And it's probably unrealistic to consider, um, a pilot program if you have to, uh, renovate and stock and. Um, you know, get the various logistics going. So, so would you be open to that, you know, basically defining the first quarter as a discussion period? If nothing comes of that discussion, um, that, that is, uh, presentable to city council. We simply move on, uh, with the idea, having vetted it, having considered some of the, you know, ideas that perhaps we can use going forward in the future. If for instance, ten four fifty-five Torrey or some other property becomes, um, you know, available for this particular type of use.
So maybe then in case, maybe then we don't put a dollar amount since we will just be exploring?
Yeah, remove the dollar amount, ju, I'm just make the work program, uh, work program item in discussion to see if that's something that, uh, could materialize a. Uh, a proposed agreement that would be presented to council sometime, um, you know, within the first quarter of the upcoming fiscal year. I, I'm completely comfortable with that, you, you know, honestly, it's, it's, this is not a sense of like. You know, oh, let's take money and allocate it, you know, I, I, I think let, let's, let's move the conversation along if we can. And, um, you know, if, if you'd be willing to make that your motion, um, then I'd be happy to have that as the modified second.
Then do I still put the Cupertino store merchandise?
Um, well, well, yes, that would be part of the discussion, right? And you, you know, I, I suppose this discussion that we're having right here would functionally serve as notice that there might be. Uh, a mid-year budget adjustment if this is a successful discussion, so to speak. So we, we place this discussion in the first quarter. Um, if it, like I say, materializes into, uh, a workable agreement that we approve, then we seek a mid-year budget adjustment. And, uh, you know, all great, at least we've had that discussion and started thinking about, you know, this particular topic.
Okay, let me read it.
Okay.
Explore the potential of location of Cupertino store and high school incubator center, do we wanna add that?
Um, maybe student, um, you know, student, student incubator center. Or I would say, let's call it a public, public incubator center, public incubator center.
Eh, I, you know, I, I, I noticed, um, Councilmember Moore's concern at Chamber of Commerce or inn or other locations.
Or potentially.
I mean, also, personally, Chamber of Commerce is not a great location, okay? With agreement that's mutually beneficial.
Well, with a mutually beneficial agreement, um, at, at Cooper, at Chamber of Commerce or.
Inn or other locations.
Right, well, let's, let, let's let Vice Mayor Chow make that. Yeah, right, and add back the word agreement, good. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, if you could add after Chamber of Commerce or. Another potential location.
We could have a couple of locations in hotels or just an or other locations.
Or, or other locations.
Mm-hmm.
With a mutually beneficial. Um, regarding, instead of plus twenty-five thousand. Regarding, uh, and, and replace twenty-five thousand and four with regarding.
Cupertino store merchandise.
Right.
Providing a draft, draft proposal, uh, provided that a draft proposal is approved by the council for first quarter physical.
Right, and, and, and everything from twenty-five thousand to that, delete. And attempt to provide a draft proposal for consideration by this council. In quarter one of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And attempt to provide. A draft approval, a, a draft proposal for consideration as opposed to is approved for consideration. By council. By the council in quarter one of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's October?
Um, that's July, that's by the end of September. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to be, you know, kind of a, set an artificial deadline by it, I mean, I, I'd be open to. I mean, since we're not putting a monetary allocation there, then, you know, um. Uh, and delete the mon, delete the dollar, the twenty-five thousand dollars in the line above.
Okay.
Um, half one, by, by the end of December, I guess that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, we can move fast, and we have time to move fast if we, um, agree on something, right?
I'll make it a first half, I mean, I'm just wondering whether it, since there's no dollar amount attached to this. Why not just make it part of the entirety of the fiscal year for, for program? And then we can, you know, kinda discuss it, because we're adding other locations as well, you know?
Yeah, I saw, if you're considering so many things, we won't.
Okay, by the end of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two then, um, just, yeah, don't set an artificial order limit on it. Yeah, I mean, this is very similar to kind of moving a proposed drone show, you know, a, a year back, right? I mean, I think this is a completely legitimate, you know, um, change, and I, I appreciate the discussion. So let's, um, um, Vice Mayor Chow, if you're okay with it, let's make this your motion. You move to, um, change, uh, the second item, I think it is, isn't it, um?
Yeah, this is a still quite strange, it sounds like the agreement is only regarding Cupertino store merchandise.
Uh, regarding, um.
Is it including?
Um, okay, with a mutually beneficial agreement, including a physical location or Cupertino store merchandise. Including, okay, potential Cupertino store merchandise, that's fine. Um, and maybe come out like ca- comma and attempt, just. Just just to kind of clean up the language, comma and attempt to provide a draft, okay? Um, yeah, I if you'd like to move that as your motion to modify on attachment A, the third item. It's not enumerated, but it's in the third substantive column, uh third, I'm sorry, third, third row. Um, that has a description of work plan item. Um, I I'm happy to second it.
Hmm.
Um, I see Councilmember Willie, as well as Councilmember Moore, both have their hands up. Councilmember Willie, you haven't made a comment on this item yet. Uh, would you like to speak to it? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Willie, I'll have to unmute yourself, we can't hear you.
No, no comment on this one, other than I support it. Uh, that's just for my additional items that will be going down.
Okay, great, thanks, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Moore, did you wanna speak to the modified motion that's on the table?
Um, yes, I still, I still don't support it. Um, and there is a monetary uh value to staff time. I would like to have an accounting of the past ten years, the amount of staff time cost for the attendance and preparation for reports which have been given at the LAC meetings on the first Friday of the month for the past ten years. I'd like to know how much has been um given. I don't know if they paid for the the cost of using uh Community Hall, but I would uh like to know about that. And we don't have the the monetary cost for in the budget for staff time on this item, so I don't feel that we are prepared to to vote on this. Um, and going back in principle, I'll say it again, I I don't, I don't agree with the the even the possibility of renovating um their structure. And uh I think the optics of having the, if Mayor Paul, I believe you were the former president of the Chamber of Commerce. I I believe that's correct, and I I just don't like the optics of of making sure that um an organization which you were formerly so involved with that they would be receiving city funds for their renovation. I'm I'm uh I'm really bothered by that.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Let me, let me speak to that. I I mean, I I I think that I I I don't find that a legitimate concern. I was never compensated at all um for my uh for for my volunteering on the Chamber of Commerce Board. And um it has been now six and a half years since I served and stepped down after I uh was elected. Um, so I I don't I don't see what the concern is. I mean, I think um as with any community, chamber has a a number of different perspectives. So um but but I respect your comment. I just um I I I I just don't really agree with the um logic behind it. So I I will be voting for this. Um, so um, Councilmember Way, you have your hand up?
Yes, I I just remember I when I saw the revised, I don't even see the Chamber of Commerce uh in there. It, can we look at the um the motion again? Sorry, I I I just think the agreement is with the Chamber of Commerce, right?
Uh, no.
Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, if you could put your uh screen on there.
Yeah, sorry. And and then I would like to um uh uh relieve um Councilmember Moore's uh concern. The chamber is an important part of our city, and to work with chamber is to benefit not just the businesses, but also our residents. So I think a good relationship with the chamber, even with some city resources, it's okay. And also, like uh Mayor Paul said, everybody on the chamber board is not, is a volunteer, so um that that's that's just how I feel. Explore potential of locating Cupertino store and public incubator center at Chamber of Commerce or other locations with a mutually beneficial agreement with the Chamber of Commerce?
What is what?
Oh, I mean, that doesn't, I I think that's understood if you find a different.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's understood, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just didn't didn't know who the agreement is. Okay, I got.
Yeah, and and Vice Mayor Chow, if you could just de-pluralize merchandises, because that's merchandise is already plural, uh as it were.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, excuse me, and attempt to provide a draft proposal for consideration by the council.
All right, I'm good.
In the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two. Okay, well, you you know, I think we understand everyone's sentiments. And so I'd like to uh call for a vote on this motion that's on the table. Um, Madam City Clerk, would you please?
Hey, I'm sorry, you uh you you don't have a second for calling the question. And um I just wanna bring up that we do not have a codified Economic Development Committee that which has been meeting since the seventies. We don't have a codified uh Fiscal Strategic uh Planning Committee. And we currently uh don't.
Okay, I'm gonna call a point of order. You are absolutely correct. If there is an objection to calling the question, um then obviously there's at least one uh vote that wouldn't go with it. I I will ask for a second uh for my uh motion to call the question. Is there a second for, I mean?
A second.
Okay.
Actually, um, you are the chair. Do you need a second for call the question?
I I do, I do. I because the the rule is that calling the question does require, um, in in our case, it requires four votes. Um, if I call the question and no one objects, um then then we can proceed with a roll call vote. But if someone is objecting, then yes, I will call for a second.
But you are the chair, couldn't you just decide, okay, that's.
I cannot, I can't, I I I cannot, because I I can, I can unilaterally request it. But if there's a, if there's an objection, there may be another dissenting vote to call the question. In which case, we need to, as a point of order, um a- and this is the type of uh motion that needs to be immediately uh addressed. And so I I have uh my motion to call the question and your second. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion to call a question?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye. Madam City Clerk, would you please um conduct a roll call vote for the original motion?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Both motions carry with more voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, um, someone remind me, was Councilmember Moore next or Councilmember Way next on? I I I I honestly don't remember who I called out. Um. You don't know, Council Councilmember Way, do you mind?
I I don't remember him, so, yeah.
Can I propose the other item that's related on row four? I was.
Uh, no, I I I'm sorry. You know, I I'd like to move on and give people an opportunity. Um, but but what I will commit to you is um you can use my opportunity to go ahead and, you know, propose that. So um, Councilmember Moore.
Uh, I'd like to move that we approve budget items one through fifty-three, less item two, which we had already approved.
Budget items? You you mean the proposed work plan items or?
Yes, work plan items, thank you.
One through fifty-three, less item number two? Okay, so you wanna just go ahead and move the proposed city work plan? Is that, is that correct?
I am not including the first page items.
I I understand. So items one through fifty-three, um excluding the item that we've already modified and approved, um.
Item two, correct.
All right, is there a sec- well, I'll I'll go ahead and second that, because I meant the commitment to go ahead and second uh proposals. Um, are there any, uh, well, first of all, Councilmember Moore, would you like to speak to your motion that's on the table?
I think we've adequately adequately addressed all of these items and made our modifications to them. Uh, so and then I think the bulk of the discussion goes uh to these uh the items on the first page.
Okay, fair enough. Um, Councilmember Way?
Um, yes, so um I um I think it's time we approve the work plan, but I have a question for the staff. The housing element process for Rena related to general plan and updates and rezoning would take a big chunk of time of staff. And staff also need to do um other services for our residents. This list of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two city work plan is very, very extensive. Has the staff evaluated time commitments realistically? Shall we, shall the council be advised that some of the plans might not be done because of all the work that, you know, we we expect fifty-something items, and I just think it's an extensive work plan. And to me, it's pretty unrealistic with the staff time we have. So I understand whether to pass it or we will pass it, but just to be understanding that this, some of the items might not get done as what we have done twenty-tw- nineteen twenties. City plans are gonna move to the next year and like twenty-twenty-one moves to this year. I I just think it's a real extensive list, so I like to stat feedback on it. And I like our council members to kind of know ahead of time that some of them might not be done realistically.
Okay, did staff wanna speak to Councilmember Way's question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor Ben Fu, Director of Community Development, if I may respond to Councilmember Wa- Way real quick? You're correct, Councilmember Way, that is a pretty pretty extensive program uh plan, but as you also aware, we do have a pretty high functioning team as well. With that said, the the housing element is is pretty big for for just about every city. Uh, with the exception of the the largest cities that you can think of, uh for most of ours is 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 enormous uh uh item. Which is why uh in our budget request, we've asked for uh funding to support uh a potential um uh contract contractor to help out, as well as um additional uh staffing. So uh let's recall from from, and that will come in our budgetary discussion as well. Uh, we've asked for for um one additional planner to to assist, as well as uh additional monies uh for the contract. So with that, we're we're um confident and optimistic that we should be able to complete uh the other items on the uh work program as well.
Great, thank you, Director Fu.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just think it's really ambitious, and um I'm hoping that we're not pushing the staff to too much. And um maybe just a little understanding that some, realistically, some of the programs might be pushed back.
Uh, you, thank thank you, Councilmember Way. And Director Li, did you wanna make a comment as well? I I noticed your camera is on and your microphone is on as well.
Yes, um, you know, with with the resignation of of Deb Fang as the city manager, that that has a potential to throw a throw a wrench into how how we are managed as departments, you know, going forward. And there's gonna be some transition there, and that's something that none of us know about right now. So I just wanna put that um obvious fact on the table as well.
Well, thank you, Director Li, and I I will make a comment as well. I mean, just to provide us some context on our current fiscal year. Um, we are in a very unusual year. It was the COVID year. I think we all pulled together. Uh, it was very well recognized that City Manager Feng did a lot of work that I believe a lot of was was very excellent in in terms of the COVID response, as well as the homelessness uh encampment. And I I think um it's also fair to say that council responded. Um, and we made decisions that kept the community safe. Uh, the community responded, but at the same time, it is a very unusual year. Um, i- i- at the beginning of the seventh month of the fiscal year, there was an attempt to extend our current work plan by another year. Um, a- a- and so I think, you know, somewhere between basically saying, let's forget about the the metrics of the current year work plan. Um, and let's hold everyone to an insistence that we get everything done in our new work plan, there is that happy medium, right? Because our community was willing, uh our council is willing to entertain the possibility of extending it out another year. And essentially using the identical work plan from last year. Um, which is basically saying, well, you don't have to worry about getting anything done, you know, in a current fiscal year to, you know, going through the process that we have right now. So I I I think that we'll be very compassionate about it, and that we have a very defined track record of uh of of doing that. So um, but points well taken, you know, we, Councilmember Way, really appreciate the uh comment um that, you you know, you have, you have goals, you have plans, but you know, you never know what might happen. We had no idea in October of two thousand nineteen that our world was about to change so profoundly for the next year and a half. So um, I'll I'll go ahead and um.
Mayor Paul? My motion does not include the the Rena uh part, or the two on the on the top of the page. I'm I'm only items one through fifty-three, less item two. And uh uh the Rena item was not prioritized, I just wanna clarify that. So there's, what you you do have actually four items that were on the first page. Uh, you already moved item, uh I'll call it item three on on page one of attachment A. Um, you still have the top two items on the page two of attachment A, which will also need to separately be dealt with. I don't think we can just imagine that it's getting approved, um because it has to be done by law. I think we actually have to approve it. So a- again, I'm just doing items one through fifty-three. We'll have to go back.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Moore. It's a, it's a very valuable one. Uh, especially uh since the comment was made particularly to uh one of the two items at the top of uh page two of the proposed uh city work plan attachment A. So we have um a couple of hands raised um from Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, did you wanna speak to the motion on the table?
Yes. Yes. So I'm a little confused. In the past, um, we make our comments, I think the staff collect our comments. And then they will be updated, and then we are asked to motion individually. And then before I can finish my motion individually, and now we have a sweeping motion? So then would my comments earlier be captured or not?
Um, well, i- if you, if you have a desire to go through um more individual comments, um, I think you have a couple of options at this point. You can um propose a substitute motion with your uh modifications. Um, or you can uh try to defeat the current motion that's on the table and go through a continued process um as we were going through before.
Then I'd like to propose a substitute motion that also from item one to, what's the end, fifty-three? And for item three, I'd like to clarify that the name is not revisit five G because the content actually include the um recording, responding to complaints, transparency on the existing applications. So it's not just the possible modification of the five G regulation. So the name is uh been misleading. And I would like the staff to give us a little more detail on the two fifty thousand that's proposed. And then do we have any uh cost recovery plan for that? And then the number five, as I said earlier, I think this should include the staff work to monitor Li Ha's proposed new plans. Number eight, and I mentioned earlier that, you know, it's not clear the description as if we are just planning. But then I know it's in CIP, but still the description here should be, because public right now reads CIP. So here it needs to be more clear. It's plan and construction, and then there are like three different parts. So just more description. And number twelve also, um, I hope that to clarify that we we are intending to have outreach likely to start in Q three of the this fiscal year. So that's my.
Okay, so those are your additions to um.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Well, well, let me, let me check in first with the original movement. Um, uh, Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to modify your original motion to incorporate comments from Vice Mayor Chow uh before we entertain the possibility of a substitute motion instead?
Only this to avoid confusion, just this.
Um, no.
No, okay. So um Vice Mayor Chow, you now have placed a substitute motion on uh which is identical to the original motion, but you would like to add the comments that you have there for items three, five, eight, and twelve. I will go ahead and second uh your substitute motion. Uh, Councilmember Willie, you have a hand raised?
Yeah, so, um, pertaining to this, I I would think to try to simplify what we're doing here tonight is that if uh Vice Mayor Chow were to say, um, a friendly amendment and number three, a friendly amendment, number five, friendly amendment, number eight, friendly amendment, number twelve. Then ask Councilman Moore, which of the friendly amendments would she accept? And then we move on.
Um, let me, let me see if Vice Mayor Chow would be willing to go through that procedure. Vice Mayor Chow, are you willing to? Um.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'll I'll draw my second, so your substitute motion's off table. Um, uh, please proceed with the request for friendly amendments um on three, five, eight, and twelve in sequence. And if you um are okay with it, I'll just ask uh for that. Is that okay?
So could I, could I just ask Councilmember Moore? So could I, could I just ask Councilmember Moore which one she would accept? And which one she would not, and why?
Um, okay, so the problem here, these are uh clarification questions predominantly. Uh, and that that's asking for for staff assistance on it. And I I don't find that that's particularly necessary at this point. Um, and I think it gets into a level of detail which I'm not comfortable with, so I prefer that it's a little bit more high level.
Um, well, these are not detailed. There are miss description, mischaracterization of the project. And what is what we have seen in the past, when we propose the work program, we say this is what we want to do. Staff come back with a description, a year later, no updates, then we find out they are going off in a different direction. That's the reason why I want to make it clear, this is what we mean. And especially if you say, oh, it's just plan, but no, it's not really plan, there is construction, but read C I P. Come on, you cannot expect every community member to read C I P. This is a work program, it should be standing alone, has sufficient description, so a community member can read the work program. And we can read the program six months later and remember, oh, this is what we want to do.
Oh, okay, well, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm hearing Councilmembers more uh say that.
That's the intention.
That there 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 isn't a an item that she would accept as a a friendly amendment. Um, so so feel free to uh to jump in, Councilmember Moore, if that's not correct. Um, but.
Oh, and further furthermore, like when we're looking at uh include the staff work to monitor Li Hai's proposed plans, I, you know, and that and that gets into some other issues with with Li Hai. Uh, there's been staff has definitely been um looking into uh Li Hai's proposed plans, that's that's not even an issue. Uh, yeah, and I think uh this kind of boils down to this this process uh in general. Uh, I feel like the the work plan would have been easier to have had C I P separated out um and just for for understanding it and having it match up a little bit better with the the budget um overall. But that, those questions, those comments are neither here nor there at this point, um.
Okay, well, I I I see the um original substitute motion that was removed um from consideration as being a set of of follow-ons and um directions to staff. Um, so I I would, I would like to ask Vice Mayor Chow if she would like to uh reintroduce her substitute motion at that at this time. Okay.
So I'll reintroduce my substitute motion as stated on the screen.
Could could I just time in for one second there?
The reason we are specifying Li Hai is because it's something the staff is doing, and we need update of. It's something that should have been on the work program anyway. I think I did mention this before, so now we are just clarifying, this is part of the our work.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I I'll go ahead and and second your your so your reintroduced substitute motion. And Councilmember Willie, you had a comment?
Yeah, I I was just gonna say that uh since um we each have individual uh uh takes on these, that if the mayor made the substitute motion for one to thirty, uh one to fifty three, and then we additional council member could then make our friendly amendments as we felt necessary, and the mayor could, you know, be that final deciding um um um, you know, uh entity. Allowing us to get through this, I mean, it's already nine thirty, and we're, we're still stuck.
Right, okay, um let let me, let me do this, since there's a substitute motion on the table. Uh, let me ask you, Councilmember Willie, are there items uh on the proposed city work program that you wanted to uh introduce for discussion or potential modification beyond uh what Councilmember uh Vice Mayor Chow had? And I believe, since this is off the uh screen right now, I believe it was, was it three, five, eight, and twelve, is that right?
Yes, good memory.
Okay, so Councilmember Willie, do you have any other items that you wanted to modify?
Yeah, and again, in the interest of time and where we're at, so there's.
Just name out the numbers.
Yeah, so uh there's three, and so number uh twenty six, I would either like twenty six removed, city hall uh investigation.
Councilmember, well, just name out the numbers right now, it's twenty six, and what are the other two?
Uh, number twelve, which Vice Mayor's always already uh got something pertaining there, and then number nineteen.
Okay, let's do, let's do this. Councilmember Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to, well, I'll withdraw my second for the substitute motion. Um, and I I'd like to introduce another substitute motion, which is to go ahead and move forward the proposed work plan items um one through fifty three, excepting two, which has already been um which has already been modified and approved, uh as well as three, five, eight, twelve, nineteen, and twenty six, so that we may uh now focus in on the remaining six. Uh, and I apologize, Councilmember Wei, did you have any others that you wanted to go over?
No, I don't, actually, I only have a comment.
Okay, so those are our six, I'd like to, I'd like to move those. Um, a- again, that's one through fifty three, excepting two, three, five, eight, twelve, nineteen, and twenty six, without further modifications. Can I have a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Um, any further question, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised?
I'm confused, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised, did you wanna say anything about this particular substitute motion?
So with your substitute motion, then, a friendly amen for number twenty six?
Okay, um Councilmember Willie, what I would like to do is just keep a clean slate, uh if if that's okay. Um, so that we can just get these approved and then go over the other items. Um, I I I I respect you're trying to go through an omnibus motion, but I just, I don't know with six items whether we're gonna get to that point.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, and Vice Mayor Chow?
So I'm a little confused, so you are moving one to fifty three, except the six.
Yeah, except the six that we've been talking about, right?
That is the potential amendment, we would do move those later.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
So are you, are those six, is nineteen and twenty six excluded then?
Oh, they they're not included in the motion, so the ones that we're going in for a follow-up discussion on are three, five, eight, twelve, nineteen, and twenty six.
Great, wonderful.
Okay, all right, so um I I I don't see any further hands raised. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on the substitute motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna take a a quick stop here and just remind everyone that we've now um passed essentially ninety percent of the items on our work plan. And so, you know, I think we all deserve a collective sigh and a pat on the back. Uh, but I'll go ahead and take a five-minute break as well, we've been going now since six thirty. We're right at around three-hour mark, so let's go ahead and reconvene at nine thirty-five, and hopefully we can get through um the rest of these items, thanks.